Not gonna work again?
I gotta get there, because my VPN will not connect anywhere.
Hello, this is House.
It just, I don't know, it's not found or something. I, um, I had that problem yesterday at home and at my office, so it wouldn't connect.
Yeah.
So if I go do this.
Okay.
I didn't. Losing control of the service.
Oh, how come this is the first time I've gotten that?
I think they set it for.
Gotcha, so I need to change my password. I can do that. Okay. Thank you for that.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
We are two minutes past eight, so. Yeah, we're gonna start a meeting.
That's fine, I'm getting logged in.
Call the meeting to order, it's eight oh two. If everyone could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Anyone here for public discussion this morning? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda and meeting minutes on December second. Motion by Whacter. Second by Stecker. Any discussion on the agenda or the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor of approving, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carried. Morning, guys, update from Secondary Road Foreman. It snowed.
Again.
Again, and again. Things going pretty smooth, or?
So far.
Equipment holding up good?
We'll, uh, see what tonight brings.
Yeah.
Or it'll be a different day, but see what we get.
When's it supposed to start tonight?
Middle of the night.
Late on.
Depends on which forecast you look at, because it's, it's changing.
Rain in the forecast at one, and that's why I asked, because I haven't kept a test.
And then the wind is supposed to be the biggest factor, right?
Wind. But I think they've got that back to like nine o'clock tonight or something, they keep pushing that back, so.
For pre, I guess, uh, over the weekend, the forecast was that, well, I guess we expected more, we'd have more snow than what we actually are seeing, which is good, uh, for us anyway. We were kind of, we thought we'd have a lot more snow, twice as much.
Any questions for Foreman?
How long does it take to, like, with the, I know it varies with wind and snow, but like, with what we did have, how long does it take to get everywhere?
Well, we were in pavement Sunday morning, we did not get on, we didn't go on gravels, but, uh, uh, six hours or so, we could have had everything.
Yeah, typically.
Would you agree with that? But as far as what we received Saturday night, Sunday morning, you know, in a day's period, we'd get over all of our roads. Yes.
We all owe you a big thank you on Thanksgiving weekend, when we all had a four-day weekend, you guys were out working all weekend long, so thank you for that. It, it doesn't go unnoticed, thank you.
Yeah, I know, I, I was traveling for a wedding that Saturday, and I got up at two chores, and by seven o'clock in the morning, blacked out, was already ran through, and nope, thank you for that. People have different levels of expectation today than they certainly did thirty or forty years ago, but yeah.
Correct.
Uh, oh, I still got, I, I told you, I still, I got a sign laying out in front of the carriage there. At any time you're going by, just feel free to pick it up, so.
We have it written now.
It was a nice, nice looking sign, and I thought, well.
And we'll get it.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Get it taken care of, thank you.
Sounds good. Anything else for the Foreman? Okay, thanks, guys.
Thank you, be careful.
What are you saying?
You gotta give it to her.
Oh, okay. Oh, gotcha. I, I thought you were giving.
It's like it's your third day.
It's my first day on the job. Okay. Um, yeah, we're gonna present yours a service award, then, good morning, Donna. Thirty years?
Yeah.
Been there.
Just yesterday. Just yesterday. Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
Okay, it is eight oh five, okay, motion to open the public hearing for construction permit application for Wayne Gerhardt.
I'll second.
Seconded by Whacter. And any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Excuse me, Haas?
Yes.
Garmin?
Yes.
Stecker?
Yes.
Whacter?
Yes.
Nance?
Yes. Okay, public hearing is open. Do we have any public comments on the site?
I guess I'll want to start.
Yeah.
I'm Kent Kraus, Wayne's here this morning also, but, uh, we're working on a non-construction expansion permit for his site. And what that is, uh, we're doing a number of them for Smithfield, but it allows, uh, Smithfield to, uh, pay their growers a little bit more for their facilities, especially as costs continue to go up on operating, without raising the per-head contract fees, and, or the, their standard contract fees, so instead of a thirty-eight-dollar contract going to forty. On this particular example, we're gonna add sixty-eight head to the existing facility. So, this site was originally permitted, um, in two thousand and six. Again, I, I can't recall it, I don't know if Wayne recalls that, if we did that original permit or not, I know we permitted, uh, one of his other facilities for sure, but, uh, uh, so again, it's, uh, two double whites, that's about two miles east of, uh, Fenton, up in Fenton Township. With that, uh, really the only thing that changed in this permit is we have to review the site placement maps, uh, verify nobody's built new houses within our original scoring matrix, and then, um, we, uh, re-score the master matrix, which, uh, continues to have a passing score of four hundred and forty-five points. Beyond that, there's really nothing that's changed, uh, in the manure management plan. He has more than enough acres to handle all the, the gallons of manure produced, and, um, like I say, there's nothing, uh, from a construction perspective that's changing outside or inside of the buildings. They're just, uh, reducing the amount of square footage they're requiring, uh, per head. Uh, seem minimal performance difference doing that, but allows us to, uh, pay the producers a little bit more, so. But anyway, we've been doing a number of them. This one, uh, because it was, uh, originally permitted at four thousand eight hundred, they call it an actual, uh, expansion permit, we take it up to four thousand eight hundred and sixty-eight head. But, I'd answer any questions you have beyond that, I'm sure Wayne would too, so.
Kent, I have a question.
Yes.
Our, um, resolution says construction permit, does that need to be changed to expansion or non-construction, or is construction permit okay?
The engineers prefer it called an expansion permit.
Okay.
In our minds, as we work on these, uh, we call it a non-construction expansion permit, just, it's a little different process for us. We won't have to do a construction verification, because there's nothing being built, so.
Okay.
I call it a non-construction expansion permit, just so we keep it straight within our office. The engineers at B and R want it called an expansion permit, because we are expanding the number of head, but I look at it from the physical, uh, buildings, we're not building anything. So that's just an internal definition I give it, so that we can keep it straight within our communications.
So, the wording on our resolution?
Is correct.
Is correct, just the construction part is.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Just verifying, thank you.
Yeah, thank you for that.
Yeah.
Wayne, did you have any comments at all you needed to make, or?
I just contacted the, uh, I mean, people saw this and thought I was putting up old forty under site, so it got everybody excited. So I talked to the closest neighbors within a mile, and they were all right with it, explained what it was.
Okay. Corey, anything you need to say?
Um, not really.
Okay.
It's, the numbers, the numbers came out, right, they're four forty-five. And, um, as far as all the distances setbacks, setbacks were good from all the properties, I went and measured them all out. And they have adequate space to add an extra head.
Okay.
That'd be it.
Very good, well, I would take a motion to close the public hearing, then. What's that, love? Motion by Whacter, second by Haas. Any discussion? Roll call vote down.
Haas?
Yes.
Garmin?
Yes.
Stecker?
Yes.
Whacter?
Yes.
Nance?
Yes. Public hearing is closed, and we've got Resolution twelve oh nine twenty-five oh one before us, and we would approve with a change of language?
Nope, he said it can stay the same.
Yeah, it can stay the same, okay, all right.
I'll make motion that we approve Resolution twelve zero nine two five zero one.
Okay, we have a motion by Whacter. You both had your hand up. Seconded by Haas. Any discussion? Uh, hearing none, a roll call vote, please.
Haas?
Yes.
Garmin? Stecker? Whacter?
Yes.
Nance?
Yeah. Motion carried, and thank you guys for coming in.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, folks.
Yep, have a good day. Okay, we are up to transfers made by the Sioux County Auditor from general basic to secondary road in the amount of four thousand two hundred and seventy dollars and eleven cents, and from rural basic to secondary road in the amount of twenty-four thousand seven hundred and sixteen dollars and forty cents, made on December first. All those for the record. And then we are up to EMS staff scheduling and time card policy. Good morning, Phil.
Good morning. So, uh, this, we have a staffing and payroll policy in place that we, we established back in July first of two thousand twenty-three. Um, this is just to clear up some language to coincide with the, um, update to the employee handbook. So, basically, we had to change the twenty-eight day pay cycle, uh, for that change, it'll be coming up forward, so we removed that language out of here, so we don't have to redo this again when we make the payroll change. And then the other changes were, um, the comp, the comp time, our policy said fifty-four hours, the new handbook says sixty hours, so we changed our policy to be sixty hours. Then we removed some of the other language out of here that was redundant to what was in the handbook, so. That was reviewed by the EMS Advisory Council on November eighteenth, when we had our last meeting, and, uh, they approved it as presented.
We need a motion, then, to approve the EMS staff scheduling time card policy.
Um, quick question on that, you said you're going from sixty down to fifty-four?
No.
No, no, fifty-four out to sixty.
Fifty-four out to sixty, okay, okay, so you're just changing it to match what?
The handbook.
Okay.
All right.
I'll move to approve.
We motion by Stecker to approve. Seconded by Haas. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carried. Okay, discussion, decision, approval of the Sioux County EMS financial reports, and any public comment? I think you've got them on the, the big screen, right?
Same thing, these, these information was reviewed at our November eighteenth meeting. This is a recap of our fiscal year two thousand twenty-five. Our beginning balance, so this first column is projected and that second column is actual, so our beginning balance was six hundred and fifty-three thousand seven twenty-six. Uh, we projected a revenue of one million nine hundred and eighty-seven thousand five hundred dollars, and we've had budgeted expenses of one million nine forty-four three hundred and fifty-five, and then we had planned in to carry over a hundred and sixty thousand for, uh, a new vehicle, new ambulance purchase, which gave us an ending fund balance projected of eight hundred and fifty-six thousand eight ninety-one. Actual numbers, our beginning balance was actual, our revenue received was two thir, two million one hundred and thirteen thousand two hundred, and our expenses were at one million five ninety-six eight seventy-seven ten. That gave us a ending fund balance of one million one hundred and seventy thousand forty-nine dollars and sixty-seven cents, which was three hundred and thirteen thousand dollars in excess of what we had projected. So our first two years have been very financially strong, very, very conservative to get a fund balance built out right away. Um, this is just a quick breakdown of where our, our revenues came from. Our call revenue, we have projected six hundred and seventy-five thousand, we actually received seven fifty-seven one sixty-five forty-three. Rants, we have projected ten thousand, we received eight thousand six hundred and nine, donations of ten thousand, we received eleven nine oh six. And then the rest of this way down is, is from the tax levy, uh, which gave us a projected of the one nine eight versus the actual of two million one hundred and thirteen thousand two hundred. So our, our total revenues was one hundred and twenty-five thousand seven hundred dollars more than what we had projected. Combination of tax levy and about eighty thousand, it was right here in call revenue.
Why would the tax levy be more, I, just out of curiosity, I guess, I? Do you know why that would be more? Because it's a certain levy amount against a certain?
Well, when we do the levy, we don't always have all of these extra items included.
Yeah, but the levy would just include the levy amount, right? So I, I guess, I don't know, we might want to check on that, why that's a little different.
Yeah, it should be the same.
Or really similar. Not saying that's a huge change, but it should be.
Does that have anything to do with property valuation?
Yeah, but he would have had that when?
Yeah, so I guess.
When the budget was set.
Even if, you know, the levy stays the exact same, your taxes still go up based on your property valuation.
Yeah, but you have that.
He has that way back.
Oh, okay, okay.
By January, so.
Yeah, but we have all that.
Yeah, all that's, can be figured out. Okay.
Uh, this is the audit report, this is where I pull my information from, um, as your hard income comes in separately, and then it all goes to the treasurer's office. They, they handle the deposits and funds through them, so. There was our beginning balance is six fifty-three, and our end balance one million one hundred and seven. And this side here does show our, our amounts paid, there was our, our total expenses, there's my seven fifty-seven for call revenue, and then the rest of this breaks out into the tax levy, um, money received. And this report, including guys' packet, is a detailed report of the tax levy and the, um, call revenue, where everything kind of plays out, and, and all the different transactions through the treasurer's office. And as you see, there's the total revenue received of the two million one hundred and thirteen thousand two hundred dollars, that coincides with the treasurer's office. Then our expenses year to date, uh, this is a hundred percent of the year, and at the end of the year, we, I'd use eighty-three point two eight percent of our projected expenses. And a lot of our savings, you know, so far has been up here in the, in the staffing, because we hadn't been fully staffed. So that was, that was the main reason how we were able to build up a fund balance. We cite saving a lot of these other areas as well, but the big part is in, and our biggest expense, obviously, is salaries. Any questions on the revenue and expenses? Uh, this is information, uh, received from the billing company. Uh, it kind of breaks down where our, our calls are, I'm one thousand forty-six calls. Forty-eight point eight-five percent of our calls are advanced life support, and at fifty-one point one five is basic life support, so we're almost fifty-fifty between ALS and BLS calls in, in the county. Uh, this is where our money comes from, from the different insurance companies. Uh, how it breaks out, and as you can see right down here, we have Medicaid, Medicare, Medicare HMO. You see these three percentages right here, about sixty percent of our revenue is coming from Medicare and Medicaid. And there's our seven ninety-five actual, um, revenue payments received for call revenue. Uh, this is another breakdown of how we're billing calls, so here's our ALS emergent, non-emergent, BLS. It breaks it all down to the number of calls and the amount that we bill. So our actual amount that we invoiced out was one million three hundred and thirty thousand two hundred and seventy-two dollars. Um, down here, we show our, our write-offs, which is contractual write-offs between Medicare and Blue Cross Blue Shield, which breaks it down to, we wrote off four hundred and eighty-seven thousand seven hundred and forty-three dollars. And then our balance forward, we're, we're carrying accounts receivable, about four hundred and twenty thousand dollars, accounts receivable, because it does take insurance companies, but through most process, everything. This is a more detailed report on our accounts receivable, and it breaks it up, like, one, one across the top here. On page two, it does have a, a, a totals column of the whole year, or you can look at the individual months and break it down. But here it shows our beginning accounts receivable, fiscal year twenty twenty-five was four hundred and twenty-seven thousand, and we ended the year right here, accounts receivable about four hundred and nineteen thousand. So about eight thousand dollars difference between beginning accounts receivables and ending accounts receivable, so it's, it's wholly pretty steady. A total of fourteen hundred and thirty-one calls, here it shows that one point three million dollars that we actually invoiced out, there's our write-offs, and their collections here is showing eight forty-two. They're, they're going by what they received versus the treasurer's office, how it's received, so there's a little bit of timing issue. So that's why that number's a little different than what the treasurer's received. Here's the seven, oh, that was, I'm sorry, I just spoke, there's eight forty-two, that was the gross charges. Here's our bad debt write-off, we did have some bad debt filing, uh, first time we had bad debts, we started, that has been turned over to collections. And there's the seven eighty-seven five hundred, which coincides with what our actual deposits were. And then here's our total payments, received seven ninety-five four nineteen sixty-three, which does match with what the treasurer's office showed in the four, seven ninety-five four nineteen sixty-three. And then our ending accounts receivable of the four nineteen. And this is just a little more detailed breakdown of how we invoice out that one point three million dollars on the different charges, mileage, ALS, BLS, tier agreements, um, etc., the adjustments, and then what our charges are over here. And once again, there's the seven ninety-five four nineteen sixty-three of our actual call revenue under the, under the payments column here. That's all I have on the financials for EMS, as you can see, we're, we're in a good place, um, after two years, we're, we're doing good, I just did hire new staff here a week ago, I did interview a new person yesterday, so if we hire both of those, we'll be fully staffed. So, yeah, we're in a good spot right now.
Well, the first sheet, you had, they had the hundred and sixty thousand for an ambulance or something to that effect, or held back, right?
Yes.
Did, did that happen, not happen, uh?
So we really don't have a line that shows that in our fund balance, um, but when we presented the, the levy vote to the, to the voters, we had presented it with holding money, our, having money available in our fund balance for vehicle replacement. So we just, we just kind of tracked that separately, so it's included in our, our balance.
The, the short version is that's a split of the cost of an ambulance over two years.
So if we have, and I don't have to bring that sheet with me while we actually have in this number, but part of this number right here includes the first two year of carryover money for ambulance purchase, so it's there available that we can move into, uh, our budget if we need to purchase a vehicle.
Any other questions? Need a motion to approve the reports and?
Yeah, and then part of the thing is we have to, you know, hear any public comment in the presenting.
All right, well, I'll move to approve the reports.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the financial reports.
Second.
Second by Garmin. Any discussion or public comment on the financial reports? Seeing and hearing none, uh, all in favor, I don't have to roll call this one, yeah, all in favor, please say aye. Aye, any opposed? Motion carried. Thanks, Phil. And then we've got discussion, decision, approval of EMS purchase of a Zoll X Series monitor.
Yeah, so a little over a year ago, we did purchase a new Zoll monitor, we have, we have four Zoles that were purchased at the same time, about ten years ago. Uh, they're starting to age out. We don't want to replace all four at the same time, so we're kind of replacing them as we, as we get a new ambulance and put them in a new ambulance. Uh, it's about six, six to eight weeks out, we're not ordering one, so we do have a new ambulance that's, supposed to be delivered sometime in January, February, March, sometime after the first year, so this would go with that vehicle. The one that we bought a little over a year ago was forty thousand five hundred dollars, and the visit to the new one here is forty-one thousand eight forty-eight seventy-two. Uh, we did get two bids, they have a new model out, um, the one that we're looking at here is the exact same one we have in our trucks now. The new model, they came out as approximately twenty thousand dollars higher than the model we have. The difference between the two is the knobs and, and touchscreen, otherwise they work exactly the same. So really could justify the twenty thousand dollars difference, just. So really could justify the twenty thousand dollars difference just to gain a touchscreen and maybe some user benefits.
I think we can stick with knobs.
And they function, they function exactly the same, so. The new one might be a little more user-friendly, but for twenty thousand dollars, it's hard, okay, I can justify that.
Okay.
Um, so it's our monitor, it does everything from shocking patients to taking blood pressures, oxygen levels, carbon monoxide levels.
It's the heart monitor too, is our.
Heart monitor, does capo and DPGs. Pretty much uses on, it's used on every call.
I'd move to approve the X Series monitor.
Okay, motion by Stecker to approve the X Series monitor.
I'll second.
Second by Oacter. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of approving, please say aye. Aye, any opposed? Motion carried. And then last item for you, Phil, we've got approval of EMS purchase of tech mount, equipment mounting system.
Yeah, so when we bought the last ambulance, we purchased some of this equipment. As you can see, it's not real cheap. It is crash rated, so we can leave our equipment attached to this when we're, when we're using our ambulances. So it does give us mounting brackets on our cots and two different locations in the back of our ambulance. So we keep our, our ventilators mounted on these and we keep the, the monitor we just discussed mounted on these. And we can move them to three different locations within the truck. Um, as I said, they're crash rated. This will complete that project for the last two trucks, one being the new truck coming in, plus one of the truck we didn't do last time. So this would complete the project in all the trucks. Going forward, we should be able to move this equipment to new trucks. We may have to purchase a different bracket or something if we change a cot or something changes. But as far as the actual equipment going forward, we should be able to move it to, to the new trucks.
I don't have this in my packet, I don't know.
I thought I saw it before, but I don't see it now, I don't know if you got it.
You got a copy or something?
Yeah.
I have some numbers in here. I'll just have some copies right there.
I saw it before.
You thought it was in your packet before?
I thought so.
I didn't take anything out of the package.
I don't know.
Yeah, I thought it was in here last night when I looked at it, maybe it wasn't.
I didn't remove anything from the package.
It's not, yeah, it's not there now, I don't know what happened, but the folder is just empty. It was put in.
No, the folder's there, there's just nothing in there. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Oh, sorry, can't even.
That's okay.
So the top part on there, numbered one through number four is the actual equipment. There's nine different components. Between the two different locations we mounted in the truck plus the, the actual model that goes right onto the ambulance cot itself.
The bid is for seven thousand six hundred and fifty dollars?
Correct.
Any questions, or I'll take a motion to approve?
The bid for seven thousand six hundred and fifty dollars?
Yes.
The total's right on.
Yeah, I see, but so the numbers there on top four, oh, there's just, I am sorry, did you get far enough? Thirty-six. Do you need a motion?
I, Kyle, did you make a motion?
I did.
You did not, okay. Motion by Haas, second by Stecker. To approve, and any further discussion on the matter? Hearing none, all in favor of approving, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thanks, Phil.
On the, um, on that staffing policy?
Nope.
When you signed that, can you have Kyle sign it as the advisory board chair?
Advisory chair.
Get a copy back from Taylor.
We can do that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next we have discussion decision, EMA, emergency response and training complex building lease agreement.
The one forty-one?
Yes.
I think so.
Now we can see.
Hey Todd, it's Josh, we're in the boardroom, we are up to the lease discussion. All right, thank you. Um, should I go grab Derek to just?
Sure, yeah, why don't you? Yep, that'd be good, that'd be good. Good morning, Krista, Rick, David.
Good morning.
Good.
Krista, did you see the email from Todd this morning that I forwarded to you?
I did. Thank you.
He's on the phone, he'll be out. He's done.
Oh, sure, yep. Should've known I can't get away without signing a bunch of stuff.
Almost done with it, Todd.
Let's try.
Good morning.
Good morning, Todd.
Morning, Todd.
Can you sit here?
I don't know if I got everything there yet or.
Okay, I'll let you.
Okay, yeah, we've got the lease before us, everyone received Todd's email from this morning. Outlining a draft. And Krista, you had that as well?
I got it.
You got that as well, okay. Well, maybe we'll wait just a second for Derek is going to come in.
I'm not sure how soon. I'm not sure how soon he's going to.
Oh, okay, okay. He is here. No, you're just. Okay. Any comments that you wanted to make, Todd, on the draft, or questions that you had?
Yeah, there's a, a few. What I did was I took the recommendation to request revisions to the lease into consideration and re-drafted a new lease strictly for the Emergency Management Agency. Sent it out to you, um, for your review. Again, it's a draft. There's some of these I don't have an issue with, some that I do. So in looking at the front page of the lease, since we're not, we don't have a lease that encompasses the whole building at this point in time, because I presume. And things may have changed since I made this the first time, I don't know. But as you recall, there were three agencies that were going to lease the building. Presumably, they would figure out who gets what. Now there's one agency in this lease, so we should identify in that premises and term paragraph number one, which portion of the building they're leasing. Because a lease creates a superior possessor interest. They control it for their time period. So you should have that spelled out in more particular terms. The legal description is for the entire property. So I don't know what that is, I don't know what, I haven't been in the building for quite some time, so I don't know currently the occupation is. And that's something that should be identified in there. I changed it then, instead of a percentage, to the twelve thousand dollars annually, which is what was spelled out in here. Uh, that's what it was going to be anyway, so I didn't find any issue with that. I kept it as a one-year lease. From the landlord's perspective, I understand EMA's desire to have a longer term for their predictability. But as a landlord, I always look at it from the standpoint of if something needs to change, you've bound yourself for five years. And from a landlord's perspective, that rarely is a good thing. We don't know what the future holds. So I left it a one-year lease, twelve thousand dollars per year. It does have that automatic renewal paragraph that I added to it. So it continues on unless there's some changes that need to be made.
I did see that got changed to a hundred and eighty days.
That, I was getting to that, yeah. So, um, that's my position on the five-year, the board's free to do with that what they want, but that's my purpose behind the one-year lease. I kind of chuckled at the five percent increase at tenant's discretion. Because that's not how it typically works with leases. I mean, it's the landlord's property, they should be able to determine what, uh, what rent is. So I left it at, um, the twelve thousand and didn't add any provision there regarding the increase at tenant's discretion. Again, these are my recommendations, you're free to do with that what you want. Then utilities and service. We had this in, forty-five percent reimbursement for total services. I'm not sure, uh, looking at it from the standpoint of access to the thermostat and access to the camera system. Yeah, I don't know, the problem I have with access to the thermostat is there's only a portion of that reimbursement that's happening. So if someone's in control of the thermostat, you've seen the comedy commercial where, you know, someone's turning up the thermostat or turning down the thermostat for whatever reason, all that affects the, the cost that the county pays. But I don't know whether it's cold in there or warm in there, or what the access to the thermostat actually is already. Uh, the camera system, I mean, I can understand that, I don't know, do they have access to the camera system?
No, but it's not a big deal to have.
I mean, just, and what I mean, what I understand from that access to the, um, the camera system is similar to what we have in the courthouse.
Security cameras.
You can view it on the computer screen. And I didn't see any issue with that, it's nice to be able to take care of, because they're going to have property in that building. And then the automatic renewal. I can understand if necessary to be able to remove the equipment that they have in there within ninety days seems to be a bit short. So I just doubled it to one eighty. That was just my suggestion, obviously, that's not set in stone, but it's, I can understand where they're coming from there. And then the last, oh, the insurance. I mean, the, the two million, one million, that's fine. I, I put two and five because, you know, I do several business leases and that seems to be kind of a common. But, you know, if it's aligned with what the county has, I, I think that's fine. I mean, I, there was no firm rule on the two and five, but, uh, so that can be changed. So I left that blank in what you have there, so you can decide what you want as far as insurance. And then the last thing that I have as far as, um, the lease is that this parking lot liability issue, didn't really quite understand it. Uh, we're responsible for the parking lot, we're clearing the parking lot, we're doing those types of things. I would need to have someone ferret that out for me a little bit better as to what exactly we need to specify or be clear on as far as parking lot liability. But that's, I added a number, a paragraph nineteen additional provisions, we can put that in. You know, as far as, I, I don't see a problem with it, I just don't, didn't know enough to have the language put in there for you, so.
On the utilities, um, yeah, that is a forty-five percent, but I believe the rent that came to twelve thousand was a sixty percent? Is there a reason those two percent?
That's what you, you guys agreed to.
That's what we decided in the boardroom when we had Derek and Phil and Krista in here. We decided the split of the rent and the split of the utilities. And the utilities was based more upon meetings and stuff like that, because that's what it's for, not necessarily the contents of the building. The rent was more contents. The, the utilities was more, okay, well, Phil has all these meetings, Krista has all these meetings, and Derek doesn't have as many. So that was the difference of the split. That's what they brought to us. And we decided upon that, that's why that was different. Am I remembering correctly?
Yeah. That's what, that's what I understood it to be when I created the lease in the first place.
Yeah, that's why it's different. Well, they brought it, we made a motion to accept that, that it was based upon their information of what they did together.
Well, that's, that's the reason for the forty-five percent, that's, it was forty-five, forty-five, and ten, as you pointed out. So, um, if that needs to change, we can change that as well, but that's why it's different.
So Todd, question number seven, the automatic renewal. Automatically renews each year, so does that mean, what about the dollar amount in the rent, the twelve thousand? I mean, does that?
Well, the way I, that's the difficult thing, um, in looking at it from the standpoint of the hundred and eighty days termination. Typically, um, if you look at, uh, July, uh, through the budget season, you know, I think you, you would put on the board the requirement to, uh, visit this early in the budget season to see if that has to increase before the hundred and eighty day termination notice would have to be given. Uh, I would hesitate to say, you know, that you do that every year, which sometimes happens in other types of scenarios where, uh, rent has to be negotiated. I trust that, you know, everybody wants to have a good friendly relationship, that this can be discussed early on in, say, December timeframe, um, or November, I guess. You know, and say, okay, looking at the year coming up, we may need to increase the rent. In my experience, rent seems to be fixed with leases in the county for, for quite some time. So I, I don't, uh, I don't see that as being an issue. But in the spirit of cooperation, I think that, you know, just a discussion, because, correct me if I'm wrong, there's a member of, obviously, the city on this commission, there's a member of the county on this commission. Those types of things can be brought up early on in the process, uh, if there needs to be some sort of an increase.
And can I say, Todd, the reason behind the rent too was mainly as kind of like a savings account. We've created a budget time, a different fund for that money to go into. Because obviously, that building could have repairs in the future. So the meaning of the rent was basically just to kind of have that savings account for future big, big expenses and repairs.
Yeah, and, um, I mean, I'm just going to probably address the elephant in the room. The reason that this lease has to be in place, especially for emergency management or EMA, uh, the Emergency Management Agency, is they're separate from the county. They are not a county organization, they're kind of quasi-county. And that came up, we discussed that and addressed that back during the budget time last year. I mean, there's an attorney general's opinion that says that. You know, according to, to, uh, twenty-nine C point nine, you know, it specifically states that, um, You know, according to 29(c) point nine, you know, it specifically states that that section creates in each county a local emergency management commission, which is a political subdivision of the state that is distinct from the county and city government and represented in certain line. So, I mean, I don't see that as being an issue, I understand that there was some discussion last week about it, but I'd like to have someone point out how that's now changed from a year ago.
I agree with you, I ask why we're having a lease need to be in.
And so it's just a matter of setting it out and making sure that both parties are protected with a written agreement that can, in essence, satisfy both parties' needs, whether it be the county or the commission. You know, so then, to kind of take that a step further, after we'd originally talked about this and having a lease, having the three entities in here, the question now that I have that I need to address, and why you only got one lease, is I'm not so sure that we have to have a lease with things that are, entities that are clearly county government. And so that's, that's kind of where we are. So I think it was very wise, I was happy to read this and have it come into a situation where it's, you know, having a separate lease. I think that's, that was an oversight on my, on my part, because in the situation we were presented, we really only have, as far as I know today, one non-county or quasi-county agency. Because it's quasi-city as well, I mean, the commission serves the whole.
What do E9111 be in that same category of?
That is my concern as far as E9111.
Oh, it's a separate legal entity.
Is it, so then we'll have to have one for E9111 as well. The other thing, while they're here, and this was my fault. When did, when did emergency management go into the building?
About a few years, back in 21, two?
Right, so the concept of prorating the rent seems to be the, not in line with how long they've been in possession of the building. I'm okay if you want to do that, but that was one of the suggestions in this, is that the rent be prorated. There's, in essence, been probably a loose oral agreement regarding, but it's a, it's a lease nonetheless. It may not be 100% what everybody expects, but I think that that would be my position on the county not prorating it, saying that you've had possession of it and you've been using the building, and it should be now put down in writing as to how things are going to be from this day forward. But I don't think that obviates the requirement that, you know, there should be some reimbursement for the time that they've been there. And I'm not saying go back in two years, I'm just saying from the beginning of the written lease, July 1, 2025.
And I do, I think that that, I don't know, I think that maybe have been miscommunicated, because I do think that, because when we were talking about the budget amendment for EMA, we said to put that whole dollar amount in there.
Sure.
So I think that may have been miscommunicated a little bit. It is the intent, you know, as long as we approve the budget amendment, I can't say it's done, but
Right.
that 12,000 is what it's going to be, I think the biggest hiccup has been just this whole process of getting this done. And, I mean, I think it's actually good that we've had all these discussions, because it does identify some differences, and it does identify the fact that she needs her own lease, she's her own, you know, the commission governs her. So I do think that's important, that we get all that ironed out.
And I, and I do, one thing that I don't think is optional for, from the county's standpoint, is we do need to identify the leased space. Because I think the city, correct me if I'm wrong, Rick, I think the city has just a small portion there where it stores its Christmas decorations or decorations.
You don't think it anymore?
Used to have.
That should, that, that would have been, I think that was just a temporary.
Sorry, outdated information.
So I think?
I was involved in that a long time ago, so.
But we did have a written lease.
When you originally said that, I thought you meant the space between EMA, EMS, and E9111. You meant something other than that, because that part's been identified.
Not in the lease, I don't know.
No, no, not in the lease, but prior to.
Okay, whatever that, whatever that, whatever has been identified, it should be in the lease as far as the premises.
Can you find that, that motion when we did that, when they, we separated it out for lease purposes and for utility purposes? I think we had two different motions that day, and then you would have that. Because that was, that's how we note the rent amount. She was 12,000, Phil was 6,000, Derek was 2,000. So that's how we set up that rent, that was the deciding factor.
That was last year, right?
It was, well, no, I mean, it was.
I can use that language whoever came up with it, so.
It wasn't before, no, because I was here, I was here, Howard was here, we were, we were here.
I would guess it would be your March 11th. That'd be my best guess.
I think it was the tail and the budgets.
Of this year?
Okay, I will see.
We were trying to figure it out for budget purposes, so we knew what to put in for, because we budgeted for it.
Yeah.
We budgeted for that amount, yeah.
So if it's been identified, if someone can ident, or give me that identification, I can put that into the lease, so that it's clear.
Perfect.
And also for E9111 as well.
Was it 60, 40, 10?
Mine is 10, I know that.
I think it was 60, 40, 10.
Well, it makes sense as far as the percentage.
You got 110, oh, I'm sorry, 60, 30, 10?
I'm not quite adding up here.
Well, you're not 100% percent, I'm not, I'm not go for more.
Yeah.
I think it was the third, 60, 30, I have to, I disagree.
It's a long.
It's okay, Tammy, I'll find it.
I'll find it.
Do you remember what was, Chris?
What, well, well, that's 20,000.
That was, or 45, 45?
12,000, 60% of 20.
I don't remember.
It was, no, 60, 60, 30, 60, 30, and 10.
But even with that, then you should identify the actual space, because the problem is, is you want to eliminate any potential ambiguity or confusion. So that if, you know, there's, there's an occupancy that's expected by emergency management, and then it differs from what the other two entities who are in that building want to do or are doing. You want to go to, be able to go to a written document to say this is what the intent was. And so if it's just down to, okay, the east, or the west, or the north, or the south, or, you know, whatever as far as the, the, the actual space.
If I remember correctly, you guys did a drawing together. You did a drawing together, yeah, yeah, you guys did a drawing.
It showed the shared area and the defined areas.
Perfect, so we can attach that, we can attach that to the lease, which will identify that.
Yeah, they did a drawing, so that's how it was determined, and they worked together on that to decide that, because, yeah, they definitely shared space, the meeting space, and things like that, so that's, yeah.
Well, we've got.
What was the intent of the building and why it was purchased? Can you state that again?
I was on that committee, it was purchased with ARPA funds, federal dollars, that Carissa had submitted an application for to the county. And it was supposed to be, I don't know, Carissa can probably explain it a lot better than I can, but the purpose of it was to be backup, emergency shelter, possible shock clinic, overflow area if there was another pandemic or an emergency situation. Am I explaining that correctly, Carissa?
So the intent of the county was to have her in that building?
Correct, as I understand it, yes.
I was in here then, but the documents that I've asked for and stuff do say that, yes.
But because it was paid for with FEMA doc, or not FEMA dollars, ARPA dollars, it can't be owned, because emergency management is a separate entity. It can't be owned by them, it's owned by the county, so it's under the supervisor's control, that's why the rental agreement is.
Because the county received the ARPA dollars.
Yes.
It was the county's dollars, but EMA applied for the use of them, to purchase that one.
Okay, so we've got some things to get to then, finish the lease and.
Well, and if you can, I mean, since we're all here, I mean, provide some feedback as to what your thoughts are regarding my concerns or questions or issues with the lease.
I'm not sure that I have a problem with anything you laid out.
For the emergency management.
Yeah, about.
I would just kind of say like, I mean, I get like, as a county standpoint, like the one-year thing, but if our intent in purchasing the building for Carissa to be in maybe like the longevity of more than a year to, to be in there, I mean, what's the, what, what changes? What would change with that building? I mean, isn't that the purchase of the ARPA bill, or the ARPA thing, and the intent that that's where emergency management and other entities were gonna sit, it doesn't sit? Not very promising, I guess, to me, you know, David's terms of.
Yeah, I mean, I, and that's the, that typically is the, is the, the discussion that's had in leases, you know. One side you want, as stated in the revisions requested, predictability. On the landlord's side, not being bound to a long-term lease is better for the landlord's position in case something changes. We don't have a crystal ball, we can't predict the future, I don't know if anything's gonna change, I mean.
Oh, absolutely, no, it's just a conversation.
So the, the kind of the meeting, no, I, and I'm not being critical, the, the, the common ground that I try to throw in there is that automatic renewal. And then extending it to 180 days, which, you know, probably restricts more from the landlord's side of things, as we discussed regarding rent changes, but then provides sufficient notice if ever there's a situation where that needs to be terminated. But to speculate, it's hard to say what could possibly change, that's just where I'm coming from. Like I said, I'm looking at it from a legal standpoint, you know, the, the county's in control in that situation. But, you know, not restricting it to a lengthy term, because if something happens, even with a 180-day notice. I mean, say for instance, there's a need, a county need to sell the building, okay? In that situation, it cannot be sold for five years if that should happen to come up in the first part of the five-year term. That's a, that's a restriction that doesn't necessarily sit with a potential tax consequence or tax issue that comes up, that they have to have that fund. You know, where in a situation where a year, it's, it's less. Now, there's obviously middle ground too, it can be a two-year lease, I mean, it can be a three-year lease. All of those are within the realm of possibility, but that's just where I'm coming from in my recommendation to the board. But I understand your point.
Yeah, and just, I'm new on the board, so I've been like the villain person for like five years, but when Craig Larson died, he talked to me about prior to it stepping in, so if it was purchased for ARPA funds, can the county even use it for anything else?
I think that's, the intent is to use it for what's been used for emergency management, emergency services, E9111. E9111 actually is kind of hand-in-hand with emergency management.
Oh, yeah, well, you have a truck and a toolbox in there?
Yeah.
And a workbench.
They have a very small portion.
This is 10%.
It's like 3%.
Yeah, so I don't anticipate, if that was the question, I don't anticipate that there's going to be a need to change what goes into that building.
Does any other, other 98 counties have this problem of like this type of scenario, what is?
I have no idea.
I don't know that anybody else purchased a building with their ARPA dollars that I'm aware of.
And I don't, and we would have to, even, even before, like, say that would be a consideration, that we sell that building, don't we have to really look into the, I mean, there could be ramifications for that, and I'm also worried if we change the intended use of it, what could happen? Because I'm gonna tell you right now, Sioux County doesn't have $650,000 to pay the federal.
No, and I understand, I just brought that up as a, as an explanation as to why things may change. I mean, I don't know, I don't even know if that's a possibility. But the reality is that, you know, to look at a long-term lease, you're restricting your options if there are any options available.
Sure.
And just another question, because I'm new in the quasi, I know your term, she is a state entity but not a county entity, but like, what, where does the funding come from?
Taxpayer to option.
Taxpayer to option. The board, the board.
The board has no control over what.
We set her, her budget.
Unlike a county government, a county entity, which is set by the board of supervisors, they have no control over that, and that's what we discussed. I know you're new, that's what we discussed in budget thing last time. And, and I think, I think you supplied, you're right, correct me if I'm wrong, with the attorney general's opinion that you were, they were using to support that. Is that correct?
I honestly don't remember, but.
Yeah, so I mean, I, I think that that is clear, it's, it's neither a county nor a city organization, but cooperates with the, with the two in order to provide the necessary services that they provide.
Good, good questions. Do we have enough as far as to move forward with, putting in information with the drawing?
Percent?
I need the drawing, and, and actually, if you want to go with one and, one million and two million, I don't know what the county's insurance cover.
Well, Chris, and what is your insurance policy now, is it two, one and two?
Two and one.
Two and one, okay, so I'll just put that in there as, as recommended.
What, I'm not a landlord, I agree, typically there's some, I don't, I don't want to rephrase that, because I don't want to talk about a rent situation. What happens if the building blows away? Is there a force majeure type of thing?
In that, in that thing. Yeah, yeah, so in other words, there's a, depending on how much damage to the building, whether it can be repaired, and then it can be reoccupied by the same tenant, that's in.
Section 13. Yeah.
Sorry, thank you.
No, no, you're right, I mean, that's a common, that's a common, common concern. And then obviously the, the termination of the lease is kind of optional if there's, you know, a major destruction of the building. Unfortunately, I think if there's a destruction of the building, all of the equipment would be destroyed as well, so there'd probably be a delay in, in services being able to be provided.
And we'd all be working together to get that figured out.
Well, I think that's the, the important part to approach this situation and future situations or things that come up. I mean, there needs to be that cooperation, I think that the, the, obviously, the, the, the services that are being provided by the commission and the others as well are extremely important to our citizens. You know, they provide safety, I mean, I got, I don't know, three or four different texts and emails from Chris on the upcoming blizzard. I was in Michigan when it happened, but it sure changed my plans as far as travel, because the weather was different there. Those are, that, that advance notice is critical to, you know, the, the health, safety, and well-being of our, our constituents, our, our county residents. And that's, that's where we should be aiming toward, is to provide that. Because, you know, each one of the departments that would be in the county, as far as county government, provides a portion of that. And I think that, that cooperation to include, you know, with, include emergency management in that, it's, it's kind of the trifecta, I think you have, you have the best that you can do, and our county deserves it.
Yeah.
I mean, our county residents deserve it.
Absolutely.
I do have one question or thought here, on the automatic renewal, with the 180 days, that will put it just before the calendar year would start, so from a functional perspective of elections or any of that nature, I'd be a little concerned that we'd be tying future boards' hands, that way, I mean, it would only be a one-year lease in this term, but I think even backing that off a little bit would allow that to be into the new year for calendar year purposes.
What do you mean by backing it off, not having a 180 days?
Having less than 180.
Why would we want to do that? Why would we wanna do that? Because I'm, I'm just talking from my own perspective. Why would we wanna do that when we know the importance of all the equipment that are put in that building? We know the important use of the building, E O C. Places are gonna use that to go in a disaster, or say, say a nursing home has to evacuate, okay, they can go there. An apartment building, they can go there. So we're talking about, we're not just talking about the things that are in the building, which also is state-owned equipment, am I correct? It, it provides such an importance, why would we not want ample time to relocate that, if needed? I mean, that's all it really is, is just asking for ample time to relocate everything that is housed there, which, when you really look at the big picture, it's a lot.
Well, and some is federal paid with ARPA dollars, so-
Yeah.
I mean, you have, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's not necessarily to control anything, which I think we need to get away from that theory. Um, I don't think any future board member is gonna say, oh my gosh, that should've been three months. I, I don't think they're going to say that. I mean, honestly, if we're looking out for the best interest of the people of this county, six, the six months is not out of line, because there's a lot of things that go into it that we would have to figure out where it's going to go. And I think we as a county have to figure that out.
And, and in practical, and practically speaking, you're only tying a future board by one year, right?
Which is the lease's one year.
Yeah, the termination would happen, you know, within that, uh, I guess you'd consider it calendar year as opposed to fiscal year, because, you know, you'd have to have your notice before December thirty-first, if I'm doing my math correctly, if I'm not, well, I'm a lawyer.
Sixty-four, you can.
Then so, you know, the, the board would have, um, the, uh, the ability to terminate it or provide notice before the following December, and then the lease would terminate in the following June thirtieth. So, you know, that would be the, the longest period of time, ultimately resulting in maybe a, a, a year to a year and a half. But tying the future potential boards with a five-year lease is, is more, is more of a, of an issue. So, um, not that that can't be done, I mean, I'm, that's just my recommendation to, to, to stay with the year, but-
Right, and I can't imagine, I mean, like, right now, we're not even talking about relocating her anyway, so I guess I don't know what that hundred and eighty days would be a big deal.
Right, and like I said, I don't think you have the ability, um, as already discussed, to do much else with that building. And you know, the interesting thing with that building, you know, there's a lot of criticism, uh, that that building has, has had over the years and, and, you know, it's just, that's just human nature, right? That's just, uh, um, obviously, there're gonna be people, be people who are for and people against it. However, in the event, uh, that something happens down the road, and we have that building to house people in, I think that is when the, um, you know, the, the potential naysayers out there who, who will, uh, be thankful that, that that was, that was in place, and utilized for that purpose. Now, I pray that that never happens.
Yeah, we all will, we all do, that's right, we all do, but we're prepared.
We are.
That's the best thing, we are prepared. Having that building has really made us prepared.
And I think we have an obligation to be prepared.
You found it?
It finally, February eighteenth. Motion by House, second by Stecker, to approve setting the emergency response complex utilities payable by EMS at forty-five, E M A forty-five, and E nine-one-one ten, and the rent at twenty thousand a year with E M A sixty, EMS thirty, and E nine-one-one ten.
That was the email, the email I was operating on, 'cause I'm looking more for the description or the picture, so you guys can provide that.
Yeah.
Yep.
If they'll give it back to you, that'd be good.
We'll get that to you.
The only description we did was on the, the newer portion, and the lease of it, you're gonna include, encompass the whole building, we need to incorporate that other part in there as well.
Yes.
So Phil, as a county entity, will still pay a lease?
Pay rent and utilities if you not have a lease.
Yeah, I'm not really sure how his budget works, um-
Yeah, he has a different fund, correct?
Twenty-six percent, yeah.
And I think the intent again is for, you know, just saving that money, so a portion of his fund-
Right, and I think for that purpose, again, looking at it from the standpoint of taxpayer money, uh, I think for that purpose, we should have a designation of money going from his budget to the lease here, so that, um, you know, there's a, you know, it, it's, all of these different agencies that have these different, uh, commissions can be kind of, our, our, um, boards can be kinda confusing. You know, it's, it's, it's more the, the paper trail that's important, um, like, for instance, when I pay the sheriff to serve my papers, it goes from my budget to his revenue budget-
Yeah.
But doesn't really go anywhere outside of the county, so I mean, it, it's more for that paper trail purpose. Now, with a separate fund and a separate commission, I can see where that, uh, paper trail would be important too. Uh, and I think that's a good reason to have that, uh, that lease, uh, have two additional leases, uh, basically in the same format for the other two agencies involved.
It's, it's a better paper trail for the audit.
I don't have a commission, Todd.
You said the board?
These guys are-
My advisory council, but then the board-
So they, if you have a lease of me, it's just more of a review.
So you don't have a, you don't have a commission or a board or anything that controls-
They're, they're a recommendation.
Advisory.
But do they keep a budget?
They make recommendations, these guys approve the budget.
I know they approve the budget, but I mean, do they have, besides, it does make sense for me to pay the county sheriff to serve my papers, but we still do. I mean, it still goes through, you know, the process, that's my point. You have a different, you have a budget that you have in yours.
He has a different fund.
And then it'll be probably a different fund given the county that we're actually traveling through.
And we established that last budget year, we established that one, so we're just kinda waiting to finalize this, so that money can then go to that fund.
The fact that they are, in essence, your controlling agency, makes you a county government.
Entity.
Entity, thank you. So.
I don't agree with whatever's-
The, the lease would help with the auditing purposes, you know, because then it would be definitive when they look at it, how much is coming from EMS going into that.
And plus, having a signature on three documents that all of, the, all three of them have reviewed, showing what the delineated portion in the building as far as what, who's in, who's in control of what, would also be, I think, advantageous for all three of them.
I agree.
And I guess in that sense, is it better to have them on separate leases or one, so that everybody's on the same terms, same with-
Well, you know, whoever, whoever provided this, I, I don't know, it says it was, uh, uh, following a turn of review, and I believe that, but the reality is, it, it probably is cleaner having three separate leases. Why? Because the difficult part that I had was exactly what whoever it was that reviewed this identified, because you're dealing with three people and trying to, in a few paragraphs, explain what happens if one messes up, right? And so, you know, the, the issue, um, is, is certainly there as far as clarity in the having three leases. You know, it's, it's, you know, nice to minimize paperwork, but in this situation, it probably would be a, a good idea to have the three separate, have three separate leases.
So the drawing of the building, who, who has that map? Is, I mean, do the supervisors have that, or?
I'm not saying-
Phil made it originally.
I'm reading it.
Phil made it originally, and I don't think you guys have really changed anything, so it's just a kind of, um, as far as-
I'm not sure, we've seen it ourselves, is what I'm saying. I don't, I don't, I think Phil said that he created that map, but I don't know that it was a joint venture from what I understand. So I, I think we just need to see it as well, so we have our input.
I think all three parties need to get together and go through it.
I thought you guys were all, I thought you guys did that together, is what I thought. Did you not do that together?
He did the map.
But did you agree, did, were you-
And it worked fine for me, I mean, it was fine.
Yeah, so I think they were in agreement to it, so if he has that, I think that would-
And you should be a part of that too, for your toolbox.
Make sure, make sure it's technical and to scale to fit a toolbox.
If, uh, if we put the south portion of the building, my percent's probably two percent. Maybe one and a half.
The whole property would need to be defined, because it's in the-
I also need to make a decision on the office space, 'cause that's gonna make a decision, that's gonna change the utility usage.
It shouldn't really change the utilities that much, the building comes at, what temperature is it usually?
It's at sixty-seven set all the time.
Yeah, so, I mean, I can't see where having her there with her computer and her things would change the utilities that much.
She's at there in the EMS day, and it's comfortable, I mean-
I was turned up for EMS day.
Oh, was it?
Well, and if it's turned up for certain meetings when it is super cold outside, I mean, whatever, it's, you have meetings, she has meetings, that's just-
Well, and, and I think that in, uh, that, that emphasizes the point I made about the utilities and access to it. If, you know, if it, if, if there's going to be an issue regarding it being cool for the occupancy and it's turned up, that increases the utility expense. And so, if that is only controlled by one party, I, I guess I was assuming the county did it. I assumed we had the custodians down there and they took care, that's what they do here.
Right now, that's-
And I always complain, because my office is either too cold or too hot, but-
Which it is here. I think the reason behind that wasn't necessarily for the control of the thermostat, it was more so if Chris has something that happens late, she was worried about calling Will, and Will says he has to come up here to do it, so it was mainly more of a, hey, how about I could do this?
And I'm, I'm, I'm completely fine with that, I'm just looking at the, you know, playing the other side of this. I mean, there is the possibility for, well, you know, here so-and-so turning it up to ninety.
Oh.
And then, you know, so bring it back down to sixty-five, and, and you're just battling back and forth, because they're all gonna be responsible for reimbursement for the utility.
I mean, has it-
That's a, that's an exaggeration, I know, but my point is, is that always, the devil's in the details, right? I mean, it, it, you think that it's going to be something that's manageable, and it probably will be, but there's the possibility that, or if there's the possibility that there's going to be an issue down the road and you can identify, it's best to put it in here. So if, if it's a matter of access to the thermostat for, for all of the parties, then I can understand where that's coming from. Um, I guess I was under the impression, my ignorance, uh, as far as, uh, the, I thought it was the same as what we do here, you know, it's kinda set, um, by one, by the county, I assume. And, you know, if, if there is that concern, it can, it can be a small squabble that can turn into a big issue.
Yeah, and I don't think, I mean, you guys haven't squabbled over the temperature yet, have you? I mean, I mean, so-
If my concern is a fourteen thousand square foot building that's a warehouse, it doesn't need to be that warm and doesn't need to be that cool compared to an office space, that's gonna make a big difference in the utilities.
Well, if you keep it consistent though, I mean, keeping the temperature consistent actually is cheaper than up and down, up and down, up and down. You know, if it's at a consistent level, I mean, I could sit in an office space at sixty-seven degrees, it wouldn't bother me one bit. So I'm not thinking, and I'm not thinking that if you guys haven't squabbled over that yet, why, why would that be an issue, I guess, I-
I don't know.
I, I just am addressing because of what's impacted.
We need to pay more for the utilities, we'll pay more for the utilities.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Well, I don't, yeah, I guess, you know, the, by, by the percentage approach, in essence, would be, maybe more for utilities, because utilities would be higher.
I don't know, hopefully, we actually have a little higher utilities, 'cause it's a great building for county resources to be in there. If you're in there more, you're gonna have lights on more, you're gonna have people in there more. But intended purpose, hopefully, we see that what the building can do, and for the taxpayers and for the responders, the volunteers, everything else, I mean, hopefully, that intended purpose, we can use it, I mean.
Absolutely, but, yeah.
It's kinda the fee that we have to use the building, I mean, turn the lights off in the courthouse all the time, I mean, well, to get used.
That's right, that's right, doesn't, I don't think those things-
Do you have all the information you need then?
I think so.
Okay, so we're running, we're running behind, we got another hearings here, so appreciate your work, Todd.
Yep, um, I will get that changed, and then as soon as I can get the map, we'll get it sent out. I will send it out to you, Chris, and you can share it too with, uh, your commission and go from there.
Thank you much.
Well, how do you handle?
I'll have to read you the arrow itself.
Oh, okay, so, uh, if you guys, uh, I assume we'll get together and go through that, make sure that the, uh,
make sure that the description of that, we have anything to the back door that's there, I see two doors in the back there.
Perfect.
Thanks, I'll-
Yep, thanks, Harry, for coming in.
Thank you, thanks, Todd.
I don't think I'm on for anything else, though.
I don't think so.
Thanks, you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, did you want to vote on the moratorium quick, since Corey's here, and then we could take a short break, or do we roll in the drainage, or how do you wanna do that?
I think there's gonna be, need to be more, um, conversation about the moratorium, because if I understand it correctly, that needs to go to planning and zoning also.
The moratorium, though?
Yes.
Well, how, how, how have we been doing it all?
So, um, I sent an email to Maria and asked her, and she had told me that the moratorium needs to go to planning and zoning as well. So, I don't know that they were gonna be able to vote on that today either, but I will read you her email, so I think we need more time to talk about that.
Okay, well, thanks for everything.
Well, we should have talked about that, but it isn't, it's you.
You didn't hear us. Um, the, well, we have the moratorium on the agenda.
Yeah, there's a lot talking out there, that's why I-
I'm sorry, and Tammy was saying that it needs to go to planning and zoning.
Okay.
Um, so, and, December thirty-first is right around the corner.
So, I just thought we, we need more time than just a minute to talk about that, so if we-
Sure.
Do the hearing, then come back.
We can, so we should probably call him, when, when, are you gonna be around, 'cause we'll need you back in here.
Okay.
If that's okay.
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 Yeah, ta, let's take a break. And we'll come back.
Sorry.
Are we gonna go to drainage after that?
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
Yep.
Well, and I, like I told, told everybody last night, I had a belief. So, we ran later than I thought.
You need to keep going now?
Yeah, I forgot, being ceremony at eleven, I gotta go to Laverne fifty-ago.
I think, yeah, I've talked to him a couple of times.
About your, huh, yeah, your question mattered, I mean-
Nothing's been done last year, nothing has, I thought that really was-
I've got no information to, yeah, I will, let me double-check on, I'll, I'll, I'll get back on that.
All right, well, I just figured I'd mention it, right?
Do you mind? Well, we'll, we'll talk, but I'll, I'll, I'll make sure that someone will get to work, I think, I, can you make sure everyone-
Yeah, I just, you know what, I assume no news is good news, you know, like, I was online and heard about it, I figured it was dumb.
I swear that he's talking to someone.
Naturally, yeah, it's where we left it anyway.
What? Uh, yes, I talked to Ed. He's, he's got some more information on, on water elevations. From what I gather, with the, the influx of water we have, yes.
When, when we were looking at it, it was about the first time, yeah, that's right.
That's why I don't need to be appalled.
I think where he actually, more typically sit on that, is probably at that point at nine, he was open to get it. It just, when, when the outback is, is more free flowing.
Yeah, I know, I have that on my mind.
Because essentially, that, boards are set at what, how we find, right, eleven-twenty.
I just said, anyway.
Yeah, I think so. Level up with she's the most, I'd say she's two nine, knee for her ass, whatever, still finishing up the antibiotics.
So I don't know your thoughts, but I, I think-
It was bacteria, but it-
I think it's even functioning even better than, than what I had determined, and I think it's even, you know, more so, more so of a reason to hold off until we're- hold off until we're more certain of larger improvements.
Now, he mentioned that there was some agreements with.
Um, he didn't produce any of that to me. Say now.
You did not. So.
And the lower part is sort of, and then they go on the map that I saw. A little higher than the 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 surface of the bottom part is. Well, you know, I remember walking down there to see what that outlet looked like, all's I all's I heard, probably seems like there's plenty of fall there. Now, you know, I I don't see why that pipe could stand that long.
There is, uh, there is a lot of fall there, I mean, just obviously from what we from what we measured.
I might visit, you know, I told Riley, we don't wanna tear up anyone there.
Right, so this was from this was that outlet on May twenty seventh. And so it it's not quite halfway, it's not quite halfway, and then we got more rain between June and June, July and into August, when we took our points would have been it's that was around the twelfth of August, so it was even it was even higher than what the water level was even higher than when I took that photo. And the our outlet is
one point four point one five is what the outlets had, so it was certainly sitting
well, it's a thirty six inch pipe, that's two foot of water, it was sitting two thirds full when we measured it. Obviously, then that's where our keltz came from, right, submerged, right? So the deal is we don't wanna play our.
I'm good for you. I'm not exactly.
Right, exactly, right, that's.
Oh, I'm a tough, yeah, it's from the house.
And it's one of those things where in theory, where.
Already building face out, but the strip now.
They shouldn't ever be able to to have more than about that much water in the pool.
Now, I comes home to college today. Well, she wasn't gonna come home, all her stuff is on line now, so.
But when you get that much in that short period of time from that.
So she can finish her test and stuff.
Right.
She wasn't gonna come home to like bragging, and I was like, huh, come home, because brat, it sounds like everything's just kinda crappy.
This is scary, is it?
Because it's too high.
It was too high. Michigan and it was a nice day, it was in the thirties, snow was mounting, I got halfway across the state.
Right, so. Hey. I did, yes, yep. I I will, I'll just load all of this, just start and read it and then we'll get it.
And I was like, okay. Yeah, everyone on this road was probably going on the interstate.
I have a little bit of additional information to get into too, it's just kinda what we're having.
Trying not to slide off and no cars and then this shit was. It was the epic series thing.
Thank you.
I've never been involved in, so.
I.
You don't wanna.
Oh, I try that, it's scary.
That's scary.
And starving and having other than that.
You wanna come here this morning, but I tried now, so.
With Josh.
Another.
I will write that you asked me.
Uh, right, yeah, right.
Right, well, I mean, I was getting in and out of my driveway without having to get the skin odor out.
Yeah, well, it's just better than general.
Oh, for sure, yeah.
Yeah. Cool. You're in charge.
I am.
Yeah, I'll go back, Amber, because I I know I didn't send emails with that contact information.
And this is like I announced.
But I saved the recommendation.
Yeah, and they almost never just
Yeah, uh huh.
Regulation.
Completely dropped the ball like that.
And I think that might be why I emailed her, I can't remember what was the deal was, but I was like no, I think I need to get some information.
It's tough, right, because there's only so much I can do, I I don't.
We're just kinda trying to get them together.
Right, is just do this.
All they have to do is talk and go over the plan to ensure that, you know,
But.
Yeah.
Whatever plan he has for his ground is not.
Yeah.
Does that?
Yes.
Okay.
All right. All right, we are after nine o'clock, um so we are going to into our public hearing for drainage uh twenty tile improvement. We have a motion to open the public hearing.
We don't have to because it's continued.
Still open.
The.
Still open it?
It's, yeah, we're still open.
Yes, so we don't have to.
Yep.
Okay, all right.
All right, I can take it away. Good morning all, meeting back for the uh DD twenty, the South Main Improvement Petition. This was uh the review of essentially the outlet sixty feet of pipe from the uh property line into the Union Slough property.
We have the date of when we talked about that last.
That was.
I was in the front.
The last hearing?
Yeah, last hearing.
Uh, September ninth?
Well, I filed it September ninth, uh it's never been, was that two weeks ago?
No. Okay, let me see. Uh, November twelfth.
There you go.
Okay, thank you.
So since then, the the we continued the hearing um because of uh to to potentially get some additional landowner input, some ad- additional information there, um there has been one objection filed that I'll get to. Before I get to that, though, there was additional information provided by the Union Slough. They have uh water gauges and they provided what their board elevations for the water elevations that they held have have uh that they hold the water levels at. And uh I don't know, is it's probably no surprise to anyone, we had a very wet few months, starting from about the end of May, June, July, uh and then even a little into August. So there were, um and I'll pass this around, but it's their gauge elevations from um the water elevation at the bridge that they're able to hold. The the set elevation is at eleven twenty four point eight. The gauge elevations essentially at that bridge from June to November was uh in in June, it was eleven twenty five point eight six, in July, it was eleven twenty six point oh eight, August first, it was eleven twenty six point four six. August twelfth, which would have been very close to when we got our survey information, it was at eleven twenty six point one six. September, it was back down to eleven twenty five point three. Um, September twenty sixth, it was eleven twenty four point eight two, and then November thirteenth, it was at eleven twenty four point eight again, so all the way back back down. The the reason that I bring those from.
What was the last date that it was back down?
The November thirteenth.
November.
So pass that around, but the outlet for the South Main pipe that we're talking about is at eleven twenty four point oh uh point
One five.
Point one five, so.
Eleven twenty four point one?
Point one five, yep, so that is all to say that the inundation and the majority of that submerged conditions that we saw um are above the typical high water elevation that the Slough can hold. Uh, essentially saying that because of that, those rainfall events and the times that we were out there, it was uh we were looking at essentially the worst case scenario for that that situation. Meaning that under more typical circumstances, instead of the zero point six three, uh the Bernoulli's equation for a submerged outlet with far lesser amount of water in in that outlet receiving channel, you'd be closer to the zero point nine one inches per day. Um, that outlet is still, of course, those boards are set slightly higher than what the outlet, the bottom outlet elevation of that pipe is um by a a fraction of a foot, um but certainly not the two foot of water in a three foot pipe conditions that we had been seeing, so.
So you're just saying that's not normal, it it happens, but it's not normal.
Correct, it happened and it's not normal, and I don't think that it's appropriate to design against that. Um, there is, there is likely a a middle ground on that. Where that is exactly is tough to say, but I I would say I would defer more to the higher capacity there based, just simply based on the abnormal amounts of rain that we received.
So whatever that is height, it was like two point three or two point four feet, the slough was up two point four feet to the bottom of the bottom at the time.
Correct.
Okay.
And that's, that is, that correlates then to the calculation that was made that's in that's high, that was the times where we measured that. Uh, when it drops to a free outlet or the low, how it's operating as of November thirteenth, you're back up to that zero point nine one inches per day. So with that additional information, there's a a little bit more into the uh discussion for thoughts on on what the district wants to do there. While we're talking about that, I will read from Michael Goji an objection letter. He writes, hi Tammy, per our phone discussion today, please note I object to the South Main tile improvement for Drainage District Twenty. I own the Northwest Quarter, Section Twenty Two, Ramsey Ninety Eight Township Range Twenty Eight. The map you included in the report shows it to be owned by WMGLC, which has been updated to the Michael P. Goji slash Goji Living Trust, thank you, Michael Goji. So that is the objections that we have received. There any comments or questions from?
I don't think this is an improvement project because we're, the pipe is there, if it's free flowing, we have a tension up there, drainage coefficient.
Well, it it if it's, the reason that that's included is that it's, that wouldn't be free flowing, that would be a a completely full closed conduit, that's not, that's uh assuming Manning's equation, that's the most water you could flow through a thirty six inch pipe. At the outlets in gravity fed systems, when the water essentially necks to to get out of the pipe, it never, unless it's under extreme pressure at the outlet, because the conduit opens and there's a a drawdown, there's that neck effect at the outlet of the pipe, that is a just a natural reduction in flow at that outlet. That's why it's being calculated using a different formula at the outlet, rather than saying what the flow, full flow capacity of that pipe would be. So it's just, it's a, it's it's not a fault, it's a it it's how water flows in those systems, that that's what the capacity is, it isn't being unnaturally restricted. The the one point three four is essentially an unobtainable number at the outlet for this pipe system. Just because it it will never, it can never run truly full at the outlet. So actually, uh under normal operating conditions, you would actually be you would be worse off by by trying to tip the pipe up anymore because you're losing grade and you'd be losing elevation. Under these circumstances, it's the elevation difference, it's the it's that pressure head that that works at the outlet that you're the best off essentially under the situation that you have, unless you want to go bigger with height, which again, I I think would be more prudent to do under a larger improvement project upstream from that. You're you're at nine tenths of the one inch drainage coefficient under normal operating conditions. My opinion.
What are the sizes of the tiles that feed that junction box? How many of of what size are actually?
So I, there are I believe from the from the photos, there are or and from being out there, there are four. There are two that come in from from what I would call is true west, one from the north and one from the south. Um, what the private system sizes are up from that box is hard for me to say, the capacity that they are providing to that, it is difficult for me to say. The district is a, from the from the original information, is twenty two inch at six tenths. So providing uh compat- uh providing to that box uh zero point one eight inches per day over that over that watershed size. Um, I don't doubt that the private systems are providing more to that, but it's difficult for me to say, as I don't know what the grades are, I I don't even truly know where they go. Um, I would I would assume that if improvement projects were done privately, that the threshold, the lowest threshold was the half inch drainage coefficient, the upper would have been the the one inch.
It's a twenty four inch tile, it goes clear back and ran into twenty one.
Okay.
And I think those north and south lines were submings two uh main three and then two. Cause my dad patented tile then and put the box in. And I believe that twenty four is at a two tenth grade. Red is clear then.
So I I would I would wager it's likely over the half inch drainage coefficient that it's that's making it to that box. From there, it's it's difficult to say.
Well, does this thirty six that's there? I suppose difficulty to say, you don't, wouldn't really know whether its outlet can handle the volume that that's entering the junction box.
Which is why I was hoping for more additional landowner input if they were seeing drainage issues. Uh, I I we haven't we've received much in way of of any sort of input and as we, not many landowners from the district come um or shared their their input. I'll say I I didn't see evidence that that box structure is ever full to the point where it's pushing water out of the top of it. Um, it's a, it's not a closed system, it's a graded top, so water could get out of it. I I don't see that with the elevation difference there, that water is has ever made it out of that box.
Well, I mean, I'm pretty sure every farmer that's in that district had drought outs, because the two farms that I did sure did. And the only objection you got was from an absent landowner. I mean, that's, you know, Kayla's, we're here on the twelfth, I've talked to Roger and Donnie Vasky, I mean, there's not very many acres in this. And I mean, by not objecting, doesn't, I mean, that's their vote to voice their opinion, they object, so if they don't object.
Right, and we and we can do this, um.
I guess I'm not.
I just want that everybody's pretty much aware except for the absent landowner.
Dan Slappy had called me and asked some of the details about it, he wasn't aware of um much of the situation at all, and he thought it would make more sense to do with a larger improvement project, he didn't didn't mention any need of issues right now, I mean, a lot of people had drought outs this year, even even newer tile or better systems that had. Newer tile or better systems that had been installed more recently still had drought outs in places, so, I mean.
And I, and I should say, I'm not, I, I'm impartial to what happens, obviously. Um, I just, for the sake of speaking my mind on it, I think you would get better prices. On a project like this, if it was done in conjunction with something larger. With that being said, I'll do with the desires of the, the landowners and the trustees. What they'd like to see done there in the best interest of the district. It, it makes me no difference what we do there. Just as a, just as a disclaimer there.
I guess from, from the standpoint that the desire or goal was a one inch drainage coefficient at the outlet. I mean, with what you talked about with the slough's information and stuff, it looks like we're pretty close to that right now. Based on the information that we have available. Which is good to know, but, um, it looks like we're right there.
Yeah, but the deal is, if you get a high, uh, water event, home water shouldn't be able to get out and have a free one. Because it, you know, they're, they're, they're damming it up. I mean, I had a nice visit with them last week. And they wanna keep the water levels up so the muskrats can build and take out the reed and air grass and have plenty of water for the ducks. You know, which is fine to me, but, uh, when it gets that high, they restrict our flow down to point six three. And that, that shouldn't happen. Like TJ was saying, it wouldn't happen if we just took out a section of pipe. And got that outlet at a higher level. Instead of going sixty foot, go forty foot.
You could use the same CMP, the twenty foot sections, I think, there's sixty foot there. What if you took out one twenty foot section of plastic and just moved the CMP up?
You'd be.
Yeah, you wouldn't change the grade.
You wouldn't change the grade, it, you just, you wouldn't. You'd gain some in elevation, but you'd still, you, you'd lose that difference in. You'd lose that same difference in your elevation for, because you'd just carry up the line. So your, your pipe would essentially still. You're still looking at the same elevation difference between your, your water elevations, you'd still be calculating on the. You, you wouldn't go back to the Manning's equation because you're calculating at the, at a not full outlet. So you, you'd stand to gain. Maybe. I, I, I'd need to put pen to paper on what your, what the thought there is. But without going, without essentially increasing your cross sectional area of the pipe. Your elevations by just sliding along that same grade, doesn't, doesn't change a whole lot.
But it wouldn't be impeded by their level of water anymore.
No, but you'd have less of a.
But that's the big restriction, is their level of wa- that's what it should, isn't it, from the?
Right, but you, but you wouldn't, you wouldn't, if you slid those twenty feet, you wouldn't get two feet up. You, your grade's not enough that when it runs full, you'd have to slide up and change your grade to get out. Above that, when the slough runs two foot higher. We're not talking about, I, I mean, we are talking about in low flow conditions, the boards being set higher than what the outlet is. You could likely make that up, but it's gonna be awfully difficult to make up two feet of difference. When the slough runs, runs as high as it did, right? That's where you're looking at moving up and changing your grade to be up, which you likely wouldn't be able to do just in. In twenty feet, you'd be, you'd be trying to run water up, which is why you'd have to go back to the box. It's.
Well, I, I get that you're not gonna gain two foot of fall in, in twenty foot of pipe. But if it, if it took six inches, eight inches, you know, if your outlet height was different, or was higher, it, it just. You know, you're, you're improving the odds. Obviously, no one can tile for a flood, nobody can fertilize for a drought. And they just, they're both cost ineffective. But it's just, it improves your odds and your chances and, you know, if it handles, it helps your system handle. Eighty-five percent of the wet years and the other ten or fifteen percent, you're, you're just, you're never gonna have enough time for. I just, if it was something simple and it didn't even, if you could use the same CMP that was even there. It just wouldn't even cost hardly any material, but just a thought.
And I, I, I respect the, the thought behind it and you would get ahead. I just, it concerns me that you wouldn't get enough ahead, that the landowners would be happy with the money that went into it to do it. The, the, the real true chase of the, the one inch. Under the conditions that we saw is what I put for with the, the forty-eight inch and the. Forty-eight inch at the end and the forty-two inch pipe. That, I, that I'm confident under those, if you want to plan for the worst conditions, that's what does it.
Do you have a table or anything on what those capacities would be with bigger tile? Under these equations? Like, how far past the one inch would we get? Because I'm sure it wouldn't be right at one inch since we're already so close to it.
I apologize, it shouldn't include those in the. Because you're right, it isn't, that isn't a razor thin margin for what that is. It's, it's that and then some.
Well, and, I mean, isn't the conventional wisdom, each size you go up, you almost double capacity?
It's a.
I mean, it varies, but.
Right, that's, that's essentially, a- and that's where you're getting from that point six to. The, the one inch essentially, um. The reason you go even larger at the outlet is then because of your, the roughness, the co- the, the corrugations of that pipe. And to fit over the, the forty-two that you've got there instead of trying to coupler together. Sorry about this.
Sorry for asking you on the fly, but didn't.
It's, uh, it's essentially, it's. I wish some of us had just a simpler solution for this, um. And, and I wish it was easier to be able to, you know, rain events certainly seem to be getting. More intense and closer together, um, but then also our periods of, of drought seem to be getting worse. So, um.
Sounds like the average is good.
Yeah, average definitely is true.
We, right, um.
Although our averages might keep going up too.
Well, and there's talks of that too, is what is, um.
Having difficulty correlating this with the final, how many landowners are, are involved?
Not that many, there's Bob, Bob Goji, Roger Vasky, Danny Vasky, TJ.
Have you talked to them?
Yeah, I've talked to everybody, except for my brother. And he's got his farm in CFP and he doesn't believe in a county friend on top, sure can tell you that.
Yep.
So.
So everybody else?
Therefore, I mean, here's the deal, I think it's fair what kind of this stuff.
Yeah, that's, that's my part.
That's okay, but, but the deal is, we're being taxed and, you know, we were never taxed there before. So now we have the ability to upgrade at least just the outlet. I mean, get it to where it should be flown at the point that he put together.
I think one of the things that would concern me is, if we did this project, it's not, I mean, I don't know if it was. Planned or set up for being ready for a future improvement, but if we put this in based on the current elevation of the current system. And then all of a sudden, five, ten years down the road, we realize that the district, whole district facilities needs an upgrade all the way to the top. And there's adjustments made on a bigger scale. This improvement may not line up with that because we don't know what size tile or what elevations that's going to require, so.
It's not an improvement for the district.
This would be, but even something into the future, if we replace this. And, and the cost estimate doesn't include replacing the junction box, which if we upsize the pipe, I'd be very surprised. If we were able to keep the same junction box, so. I think our costs are gonna be significantly more than the estimate and. I just don't know that it sets us up for success into the future.
I don't know how you're gonna add any more acres. You said there was eighteen hundred acres, I can't see how the watershed's gonna increase in size.
I didn't say increasing the watershed in size.
What you're acting like we're not prepared for the future, well, future's eighteen hundred acres, according to the engineer, that's it.
But if there was an improvement requested to go to a one inch coefficient for the entire district. And you need to go deeper for that, your outlet may not be able to be at the same elevation as the current.
It's, it's still restricted because of the dams that are in the, the lab two channel.
I'm trying to do a lot on the fly here, but I'm also trying to account for the difference in the water elevations and I. It's, it is actually, with those sizes, it's just. With that same water elevation, it's just at the one inch drainage coefficient.
The forty-two is?
The forty-two and the forty-eight, yes. If you're assuming that there are those high.
Okay, but what is it under normal conditions?
Uh, I, I don't have that helped because I didn't have what the wat- what that lower water elevation. Would be, um, you'd, I mean, it'd be.
So you had it called under the current conditions at the time of survey?
Correct, with those same, same water elevations.
Yeah.
So you went from the zero point six three to one.
Okay.
Assuming that there was no change in the water elevation.
So if you look at the other comparisons of point six three to point nine one, that's a fifty percent increase? Would it be potentially proportional?
So you have one more time?
The, in your chart, that's the point six three is highlighted, right above that, you said you used the point nine one would be mo- more likely to be accurate. So between that, that's time and a half of six point six to point nine.
Right.
So if you're using the same equation.
If you went to a, if you went to a forty-two with the lower water elevation, you would be, you would be well over the, the one inch.
Okay.
What exactly that number is, I would have to put more pen to paper to count, because I'd have to assume that there would, would drop that water level. Um. Essentially, with the lower water level, with what you have, you're at, at nine tenths.
Right now.
Right now. The forty-two and forty-eight with the same high watermark gets you right to the one inch. If you then drop that water amount with those, you go inch and a half maybe. Is, is what goes on. Of course, a final design with all of that in consideration could be made. With, with tweaks in the, the elevation, there's, we, we look at these numbers because they're. They're the least time intensive. If you're gonna go to a final design, obviously that takes more, that takes more time, that takes more. Consideration for the, the factors that are out there. Um, especially knowing that the water levels are not held at where we found them. Uh, is this? Am I making sense?
Well, you know, I mean, you know, the, they even still can hold that water at eleven twenty-five. That's what they told me. And they can just hold it there.
The, well, the boards are, the boards under the road are set at eleven twenty-four point eight. So two tenths lower than eleven twenty-five.
Yeah, it depends on where you're at, I'm sure, because they told me that if they're on the north, let's see, south side of eight forty-two, that's exactly. Higher than the north side of eight forty-two, because the water couldn't get to the Des Moines River.
Well, and that, and that's part of it too, is that, and I, I spoke with Ed Meendering at the slough as well. In that the reason the water was as high as it was for as long as it was is because there, there was nowhere for it to go. So there, there again.
Nowhere for it to go because of.
Because the, the, the receiving streams were that high.
The flood, flooding.
Or flooded by the slough, yes.
They got, what, what is that down there? Buffalo Creek.
Yes.
Here's the deal, when the Des Moines River raises high, they got a baffle in their system that closes. So that they don't get carp and stuff into their water, so they weren't letting any water out to the Des Moines River.
Well, you guys, it would have backflowed.
Yeah.
When the receiving systems are that full.
Yeah.
So that's why the water was as high as it, it, because they, just the amount of water our area got.
Yeah, no, no difference in any drainage ditch or river, it just flooded in essence.
Right, so that, that again is saying, okay, so what, what water level, what event? Do you, do you account for? And again, what we've put forward in the estimate on, on paper is assuming that same. is assuming that same high water elevation, those same conditions, it would take going to larger sized, larger sized pipe.
Now, you're talking about flooding there.
Right.
Okay.
I'm talking that same, the same water elevation that we found it at.
I see, okay.
Uh essentially saying that if you were to encounter that same, those same conditions or even something similar, it would be difficult to get to the capacity that's requested without upsizing pipe, it'd be difficult just to do that by a matter of elevation change. However, if you put those larger sized pipes in and then it is drier for longer, your it, your system is essentially.
Well, in a drought, you're all tiles over there.
Yeah. There's there's something to be said, I mean, yes and no, you you're still carrying water out of the profile. And there and there could be, there could be and would be uh tweaks put into the the final design that that gets a more refined number, that gets a a, something that doesn't show that amount of of bounce.
So thirty-six inch tile, the way it's laying there now, if it had free fall, our drainage coefficient is at an inch.
You're at nine tenths of the inch, yes.
Yes.
As it was as of the uh November thirteenth reading, you would have been as close to that zero point nine one inch per bay as you could get.
What would be in this now?
That's the.
November, is it?
Yeah, November thirteenth, water elevation, it was it was to the the boards. It was to the, the water was at the top of the boards, eleven twenty-four point eight was the water level at three seventieth on November thirteenth. That was the information that I got from the school.
So they are bulling it, but let's see, we're at eleven twenty-four point one five.
Correct.
So it's like seven tenths, six point, point six five tenths.
Yeah, six point, six point five tenths of an inch, tenths of a foot.
Okay, foot, yes. There is, there is.
Seven, seven inches maybe.
There is a constant amount of water in the body.
So when I talked to those guys, they said that they had agreements that they could hold that water eleven twenty-five and and you never got a copy of those agreements. I mean, you would just mention to me, I should have asked for a copy. But is there any way that we can work with them on uh holding back the water in the dam? If we lowered that a little bit?
That is not that's not something that I think the district has, I mean, we could ask, but I don't think it's anything that the district has the authority to do.
So we're intact, clear to the center. You know, they're they're not supposed to be holding that water out.
Right, it's, I I think that would be a difficult conversation to have. It's it's a water level that they've historically held.
Yeah, yes, I was.
For for worse or better, I I agree, it is a a bit unfortunate that our outlet is below the normal operating water level of the slough.
Historically, we weren't taxed there either since the two thousand five, from each, it's there, it's put in nineteen thirty-eight. We were never ta- they took it, they took us off the tax roll when they did that, because it's an inferior common ownership. It started, we were never taxed there. And that's why we had an opportunity, if that's the board, thought it was wise to go ahead and tell a hundred thousand hours of reclassification schedule expense as, and now we're taxed. We're taxed, we have to rate the picks.
The reclassification that took place that you're talking about had no impact on the potential change of this outlet that's being discussed right now. From the union slough's perspective, from my perspective, there has, there has been no change from that reclassification. If that reclassification had not happened, we'd be having the exact same conversation where I want.
I watched you guys at a workshop, erase a whole bunch of records and so that they, you and what, Jimmy Hudson and that way, St. Westgar decided to throw the bill on DD eighty, act eighty-two, because it started up down DD eighty, last fifty-five, last seven, that didn't work, then we tried common outlet, that didn't work, Jake and Westgar did a bunch of work on other outlets, and Roger was concerned about where he was gonna throw that out of the bill. So this is what you guys decided to do, Kyle, that's how it got started.
That's your version of the story.
That's what happened, if you need the history, just go read the history. We're taxing that, now we got the right to go clear this area next year. And that was because you decided to do that.
No, it's not.
Yes, yeah, you voted for it.
Uh regardless of the impacts that DD eighty has on us, which is what twenty serves, the twenty's outlet is DD eighty. And my understanding is that it being considered part of it now. That doesn't have, yes, you're assessed into eighty, but that doesn't have bearing on what happens here. Eighty's not going to be assessed any of this potential project load, it would go all to the the schedule for the split on on twenty. There's a standing schedule for this main. So regardless of what happens with eighty and its schedule, that that has no bearing here. What we're talking about is the improvement to lateral twenty, or to the south main of twenty. The slough, in my opinion, is right to allow this work to be done. That's where the conversation with any of that should begin and end. It's the right thing for them to allow it to to be done, in the event that it's done, that over. Now it's the, on to the smaller portion, the smaller district draining into that, what to do?
And like we had the conversation at the last discussion about this, the union slough has very clearly seen and agreed that there is a difference between drainage district facilities and private tiles going into the slough. They have acknowledged and understood the rights and the laws around district facilities and have not stood in the wa- in the way of any of that work, so.
So it's okay for downstream landlord, wanted to hold up an upstream landowner's water, so their water doesn't cross. They're like, is that what you're saying, Al Kyle?
Hmm, that's not at all what I just said.
Well, seems like that's what's going on here.
You can try to twist my word to any direction.
And that's, and that's, and that's not what's happening.
That's not the case.
The slough is not attempting to hold up.
We've walked a dam, what does a dam do?
They're, the slough is holding water, they they're allowing this to be improved.
It's not an improvement to repair. We'd have our drainage coefficient if they wanna hold the water up.
If you'd like to take that up with the federal government, please.
I and and really, at this point, I'm not so sure that it that it would matter from the district standpoint, I don't think that it's something that is is going to be, that this project would be significant enough that it would, the south main already has its own schedule. It it's not a, I don't think it's a significant enough change in equitability that it that it matters. We don't have enough objections that it warrants the remonstrance one way or the other. It's, it would be an increase in the district's ability to carry water, but for a smaller, essentially to a smaller impacted degree. Um so whether it's a repair or an improvement at this point, I think is maybe a little moot. Just from a a code standpoint, obviously I don't know what the impacts to any potential uh upstream wetlands. NRCS, FSA, the the impacts there, I can never, I can never tell whether they deem it an improvement or repair. Based on what I've put forward, based on the ability to carry more water, I deemed it an improvement, but really the the rest of the differentiation between repairs and improvements where we sit right now are minimal. If if consequential at all, so it, in my mind, it's a matter of, is it a justifiable expense to do this? Yes or no? It seems from landowner input or lack thereof, they don't, they don't seem to be in opposition.
That's what I'm hearing. Well, that might be all for the forty, the forty-two to the forty-eight. I mean, only, yeah, the only reason like I was to, you know, threw out there, um, you know, to bring the CM, the thirty-six inch and move it up is because maybe that would be a repair, since.
Well, the whole thing's repaired.
Well.
Who who ultimately is gonna decide whether it's a repair or improvement?
The the.
Doesn't matter what we think, doesn't matter what you think, doesn't matter, who's gonna make, who's gonna decide?
Right. The the most meaningful impact on that would be to any upstream wetlands.
NRCS.
NRCS.
And you can't ask them that in advance?
Yeah, I could go down and talk to NRCS.
We, what I don't have the permission to find out is if there are wetlands upstream.
Upstream wetland determination.
I could ask them what they potentially deem this as, but I don't have the permission to do that, essentially.
During any tile project, is it, I mean, is that the, the the commonality here that you have to talk to the NRCS?
Yeah, skin improvement, yeah, they're talking NRCS for wetland determination, but if you're just repairing.
Again, you say repair, he says improve, he being anybody else.
Right.
It it's not up to you, it's not up to anybody else, ultimately, it's the NRCS.
Right.
And and ultimately, that could have great impact if if they determine it's improved, but it could have great impact on upstream wetland.
Or just go down and talk to them.
Yes, it could, to the tune of fifteen thousand and maybe.
I I understand that, I understand that.
And I guess even from the cost estimate, I mean, what people are potentially looking at is fifteen thousand in construction. And there's engineering obviously on top of that, but that doesn't include completely changing the junction box, correct?
Correct.
Which is typically not a small expense.
If if you'd be able to retrofit the one that's there, it'd of course be far less expensive than a brand new one. Brand new ones, you'd double that estimate.
Easily.
Be easily.
Well, that's nothing compared to if it's gonna have some impact on upstream wetlands.
Well, and the report has in it that potential impact, and even with that, there hasn't been.
Yeah, but if they're up there and and then somebody gets this later on, you know, they're.
And it it's it's difficult, it's hard to tell the reaction that there's going to be. This isn't running straight through a wetland, it isn't even truly, in my opinion, a realized benefit further up. What you're doing, what the district would be doing, in my opinion, is future-proofing itself.
Very localized, yeah.
Right. That could hold no impact upstream, i- in my opinion, it would offer very little impact upstream. But I can't speak for them either. And on on something of this magnitude, um, we we could send out the the requests, the the notifications on it. Sometimes you see mixed results even on the turnout on who listens to that. There there is, there there is still potentially a lot in play despite the small nature of the of the project, and some of that is is unknowns that could be figured out with I guess additional time, sending letters to to landowners, um. I I think it, the 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 likelihood of major impacts is small based on the potential impact that this project would serve to provide. I'll say it's a, it's a difficult one because it's so unique, it's it's such a small potential project.
What's the downside of 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 send, as you said, sending out to each and every landlord, saying, you know, we we're considering this? If it if it is deemed an improvement down the line, it's gonna severe, it's gonna impact your, if if you have wetlands, farmland wetlands, it's gonna impact you in a severe manner. So the time's not much of an issue here, right?
That's all, that's all you'd be doing, you'd be paying this time.
And it's not much of an issue here right now, we we got a couple of months, right?
Yeah.
I don't know, I mean, you know, just you guys can't even decide what this is.
It's not up to us to decide what this is, it's not up to us to decide what this is. Somebody else is gonna decide what this is, you're not gonna decide, we're not gonna decide, he's not gonna decide, NRCS is going to decide. Is that correct? Is that a fair statement?
For for the purposes of the wetlands, yes, we still need to have a role in that as far as if there's objections and if it met a threshold of remonstrance and all that, but currently we're.
But we don't get to determine whether it's an improvement or repair, NRCS is gonna do that.
We have to determine whether it's an improvement or a repair for which process through the code we follow, so.
That is, Kyle's right, we're, I I was speaking from the, the the reason that it doesn't make a difference to date to us here is because we've.
We've already done the public hearings.
We've done the public hearing, which was an improvement requirement, we don't have the required objections to to stop it if we deemed it an improvement.
Yeah.
Um it already has its own separate standing schedule, so it wouldn't need to be reclassified, which is an improvement requirement. So if we went with what my recommendation is, is that it's an improvement, it doesn't change procedurally what this group does different from a repair, because we've already checked the boxes for the improvement. The one that's left that we don't decide is the NRCS.
So if it.
Wetlands upstream.
There could be, we don't know that, yeah, yeah, there was, yeah.
If there is wetlands upstream, okay.
If there are wetlands upstream and they decide that they've been impacted by this.
Okay.
So like when when you compare this to simple repair requests, it's a twelve inch tile that's got a washout, you're putting a twelve inch tile back in the ground, simple repair, you have a set of processes through the code that that follows. This, we have followed the higher level of scrutiny of improvement. Processes, so to speak, with public hearing and all that stuff, so. It does make a difference in multiple avenues, but we've already checked the boxes here.
Right.
So.
And in that report, it says if if if, and I've got here too, I just did one, what page is it, you're on?
Uh, the second page at the bottom. First, with any improvement under Iowa Code Chapter four sixty-eight point one two six. Any upstream farmland wetlands in the district could be assumed converted and mitigation of these converted acres. Would be required at a minimum cost of acre for acre basis to meet farm program compliance.
Okay, so then everybody got this?
It's, everyone got notice that it was published or that it was on file.
Yeah, I mean, when Dennis talked to me, he did not say that he got the first one, but he got the notice for the second one. So that's why he was calling to find out what it was, so I wouldn't be surprised if something got lost in the mail or whatever, or.
Well, and it sounds like Joe's.
But still.
Joe's talked to a fair number of people as well.
Right, but I asked, I heard that answer. I heard your recommendation that basically the break, it's not like the improvement, the whole lot is under normal conditions.
Well.
And how, but how?
It's it's twofold, right, if my recommendation is, is if you wanna go down this path to get the capacities that you want. You go to a forty-two inch pipe with a forty-eight inch outlet. Caveat. My estimate. For something of that size may not be the best.
Or is it financial?
As far as the the estimates for what pipe for that would go, the labor, the the potential of the box. And that. I'm of the opinion that you could do it, you could get more for less.
On a bigger project.
Yes, but. I wipe my, I I washed my hands of the. The actual final decision, obviously, like I do on, like I do on all of them. Um, I I know, it it's, you call that what you will. I I think if you did it now, you certainly would be set up better.
For the future.
For the future.
Does this take into account any grade or depth changes to the future upstream?
No, and what my recommendation now would be, would be to do everything, everything, everything in our power. To retrofit the box that is there. Because that's where you're going to get the majority of that grade change in the future. And what I would not want to see happen is we put in a new box there now. And then in the event five, ten years from now, you put in an improvement project and you need a different box. Because you wanna go deeper, because we've got a lot of grade that we could potentially give up there to to get out. Um, to, you're at almost two and a half percent. You could get depth on everything up from there and just go, just have your box be taller, right? But we don't know that.
Yeah, but your box is gonna be submerged. Cause you're you're at one eleven, twenty-five at the box right now. You can't go deeper because of the dance.
Yeah, and I was, kind of my question too, I don't see how you're gonna gain the grade if 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 we're already dumping at the bare level.
Well, that's because at the, we're, we're eight tenths of a foot. Higher at the fence line.
Than at the, at the outlet.
Then, right, then, well, then at what the board, what the.
What the boards are at.
Boards at the slough are at. So you have some, you would have some depth to to gain there.
Well, no, we didn't, uh, you know, we had two tenths grade all the way back down. Three sixty, they have, that would be a one mile and a half.
I think in your report it said point six for grade upstream.
Well, and that would be. Uh, yeah, I, that's. Idyllic, I don't think that that's actually what was gained there, um. It's. I'll say this. I don't think that it's a bad idea to future-proof, I don't wanna stand. I I never like to come to these and and try to work off of the premise of fear, oh, maybe the slough won't let us do this. Maybe the federal government someday will step in and cut us off, this or that, what have you. That being said, I don't think it's a bad idea to future-proof any of this drainage, just because of how important drainage is. This is just gonna be an expensive future-proof. If the district's fine with that, if the district doesn't think that it's too financially unviable to do. And there hasn't been major objections to it, then it goes back to what's in the best interest of the district.
Well, that's that's kinda what I'm hearing, I mean, if they, if they wanna do it, they wanna pay for it. I I I don't want somebody coming in here a year from now saying, I I've got thirty acres of farmland wetlands, but.
And I, and I.
That's gonna cost me four hundred fifty thousand dollars, but.
And I think the risk of that is very small. Um, I obviously I can't look into a crystal ball any better than anybody else, um. But this is not going to extend an improvement significantly upstream from that box. Because we're not providing any bigger sized tile than what's already going up there. We're providing to them an outlet, and your system only is as good ever as your outlet. But if the outlets for further up aren't sufficient enough, what we've done here didn't change anything.
But then you, but then tying that in with your future-proof again. That's contradiction.
Right, then why did we, then why did we future-proof it, right, ex- exactly, that's. That then comes back to the wrestle of the whole.
Around the whole circle.
Right, that that, that comes to the wrestle of the the project.
Yeah, and I I understand the other aspects of other tiles that may be coming in, but from a district perspective, we're looking at two tenths of an inch per day. We're probably able to put out nine tenths of an inch. That's. A significant capacity difference.
All right, my concern sometimes on these is that. As long as it's noted that what we're doing here on these improvements or repairs or district projects aren't ever. Not not a single one's ever going to be the the one thing that cures all of it, right? My concern would be that we've, that any amount of money that we ever spend, if it doesn't. Scratch that one itch for the one person on the district, well, that we've, it sometimes looks like we spent money for nothing. And I'm not advocating for don't do anything ever, quite quite the opposite in a lot of instances, it is prudent to examine these things. This particular instance just has a localized area of impact. And it sets you up for what you do next, which means that until you do that next. Those areas of drought, like we don't get any better.
Yeah, I I.
I mean, that makes, that makes sense, right?
Engineer died, it was D D four lap twenty-eight, right, that was up in northern, like Rick Bauer and the guys were in on that. And you guys upsized that pipe substantially, but you put it out, you said you, it kept it level so that.
They're, they were having.
So it was considered a repair.
They were having difficulties. They were having difficulties with grade or with cover, yeah.
Right.
So it went larger at a flatter grade because it carried the same capacity of water.
So then it was a repair, that's what they considered that.
Right, and that's, and we could, again. We've already checked all of the boxes from the district standpoint, we could do this as far as I'm concerned right here. You don't have to lobby to me whether or not it's a repair or improvement, I'm saying that what we've done now is sufficient enough that we could do the project. I'm not. I don't in any way lobby for what the farm program compliance would say.
I'm just going by your chart.
Right, so a- at that point, again, I think that that whether it's a repair or improvement. To this. Meaning here does matter. We can do it. I would say confidently we've checked the boxes, we could do it. But we've, we've, to Howard's point, we've gone the whole circle.
Here, here's the deal, let's just say you have to replace the box, okay? So then, okay, if you if you can gain grade there, you put the box down right now to where you get the maximum grade upstream in the future. And you size that pipe that's coming in here now, I think it's uh main two. Just put a one inch strength coefficient over there and then downsize it on the other side.
And.
You see what I'm getting at?
Right, and we could, and we could do that, it's. That would actually probably be the best course.
You gotta give me that again.
Also, so essentially you, if we're going to future-proof, we. We at this time, instead of retrofitting the box, we we get all the way up to and including that box structure. We bring everything in, but we essentially, we we bulldog out big enough holes at elevations. That you could just start from the box and do your improvement from there. But what you.
How would you connect to that if you have a, what is it now, twenty-four going into a hole that'd be?
Uh, a a reducer and grow. Or you, or you get to it and you grow around it, that's. That's not as uncommon as you'd think. And then what that, what that grounded connection is, is something that's more easily broken than the box itself. Right.
But that takes the estimate from.
That likely, that.
Thirty to.
Yeah.
Thirty to what?
Sixty.
Right, yeah, it likely doubles, it likely doubles the amount of money you're looking at spending.
By your future, you don't have to redo it.
Right.
But what what's everybody else think about that, you know?
I think it's, you know, I mean, if you, look, if you have, look, this is where I look at it, if you have to replace the box because you can't make the whole bigger. Going to the slough, well, then that means you're not gonna make the whole bigger one away from the slough, okay? So at that point, if he's gonna put a new box in, say he recommends a new box. We're not gonna put one in that's gonna limit your grade further upstream, you're gonna future-proof the whole thing. You know, but you just don't put a bit, you know, you either put a tile reducer to what's already there. You know, and that way, I mean, two decides to do something in the future. They have, they get to the box and go.
So eighteen hundred acres and sixty thousand is thirty-three bucks an acre.
Average, the top.
I I I hear you, I I, you're ahead of me, yeah. And I know it doesn't get allocated equally, uh, or probably doesn't, or, I don't know.
It, I I mean, looking at that, it's. I don't ever wanna come in and say, oh, well, it's such a small amount of money, you know? I I that's, that seems disingenuous, almost disrespectful to say. On the scale of improvement projects, it is a very small amount of money. Based on the ones that we've looked at doing, right, I mean, on the scale of the three million dollar projects. This is not bad. Um, but it'd be money for nothing if nothing ever more came on it.
I said, probably whatever, whatever we, you know. I I can get on board, but you know, having an outlet might be the most important thing in the world, having the best outlet you can have. Might be the most important thing in the world, two years from now, four years from now, or twenty-four years from now, somebody, somebody will be wet. And 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 so so it's just a function of.
And and I guess for what it's worth, for who's here, the lack of objections.
Yeah, that's that's right here, right, we're not here.
Kinda, it's kinda telling as far as what the potential desires and.
And lost in the mail is one thing, but they were printing the papers too.
And it's on the website.
And sent twice.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So to to put in a new junction box. Would possibly, even though it's extra cost now, in the future.
It would save you.
Save us money if that.
Not us.
Not, well, I don't know, but still.
The royal, the royal us, yeah.
We're making the decision for the other us, it could say, it could potentially save in the future.
Correct.
Okay.
With inflation, I don't know how much.
Well, yeah, exactly, like, it it could be double, triple, who knows? Cause like you say, you don't know when you're here from now, twenty years from now, what will it be?
Yeah.
At least we have the capability at that point. I mean, that almost makes sense to me.
Do you try, do you, I'm trying, yeah, try, look, three, do you try to fix what's there?
Yeah.
And then if it, if it doesn't work out, you just, everything stops and you order a new box?
Yep.
If that, that'd be the easiest.
Well, it's a large ground junction box.
I think if you're gonna do it.
Just do it.
Right back where we're at then, if we have to end up.
Right.
Not really, you just don't have the cost of the junction box until.
You can't leave that open for that period of time either.
I mean, how long would it take for a junction box to get in, a month?
I think.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
Probably three months.
Something, something that.
Customized.
Something that size would be, it'd take time, I mean, because it's gonna, it's, it will have to be a rather large. The one that's there is a ra- rather large rectangular structure, just because you have to have that wall thickness to get everything in. So, um.
How many manufacturers are there of these types of junction boxes?
Oh, I don't.
See, ready to put that in, I could maybe talk to them, see what they did to see how they're constructed.
There, I mean, it's, it's all precast to my knowledge.
Right.
So whatever the nearest precast. Concrete manufacturer is anymore. But no, I mean, they put in those orders and and place them, something like this is gonna take a couple excavators to to set. I mean, I mean, it's gonna be very, very heavy, but I do think that if you're going to do it. And and you really wanna future-proof against this, the the best thing to do would be not to try to retrofit the box. Because that's the biggest savings in the long run that you would see because of its expense.
And you can you can then order now, see if you can add in.
But nobody's really inspected the box, we we don't know what size the box is or how many tiles are running into it, right? Cause you, you didn't, you didn't know how many mains or lacs actually feed this. So you don't, we don't really know what's even going into the box.
You got main two, and then you got our twenty-four inch, and then you got two sub mains.
Right, I was gonna say, you've got four, I know there are four coming in.
Charging the district, and one going out.
Right. So I mean, it might be big enough, maybe there is a reducer or something, because we don't know that there isn't, right? In in the junction box. Oh, no, everything's, everything's pretty. From the photo, everything's grounded right in.
Oh, we have a photo of it.
Okay, yeah, no, I was out there, yeah, I've, everything's grounded into.
How deep is the floor of the junction box? Cause I, if I remember the pipes going in, they'd actually drop in.
They would, I was more concerned about the outlet, so I have a lot better pictures of the outlet than I do. They would, I was more concerned about the outlet, so I have a lot better pictures of the outlet than I do. And it's right at the bottom, but you're right, everything drops in, I'd say six inches.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking, from what I know of it.
So it it has a, it's not some of six inches, cause it's outlets the same, but.
But you're saying the floor of the outlet is at the floor of the junction box?
Yes.
So that'd be at eleven.
Eleven twenty-five point six.
You're really not gonna gain a whole lot going deeper.
What what I would recommend doing is that your increased pipe size is everything that you went down. The forty-two, you don't go up, you go down. That's why it would be hard to retrofit the box, because if you're gonna get gain that depth, you're already at the floor.
Right.
So you could get in, you could bulldog everything so that they all came in at the at the bottom. You'd essentially have a foot then from where your pipes are truly outletting now, the six inches they have right now, and then the other. Six inches for an increased pipe, that's the depth you get.
Yeah, but you don't wanna go any lower.
With that, it would only be if you wanted to get.
Lower.
Well, more cover, more cover over here.
But then you're not gonna have the grade.
N- no, not if you if you, I mean, you you could give up stone to slide down to slide the whole grade. Hold the grade and just slide the whole system down.
Yeah, but then you're gonna be.
I mean, but we're, I mean, we're talking hyperbole, right? We're we're talking all hypotheticals of what's going on. It would take. Review and design time to tell you all of this. I'm just speaking from from the cuff.
But if you keep the same grade and the same length, you're gonna be deeper than than maybe six inches deeper at the outlet.
And that's where I'm saying, if you wanted to gain depth at the box, you'd have to give up some of that two and a half.
So you're gonna run a flat.
You you'd run slightly flatter those sixty feet to the outlet.
I see, okay, that's what I.
Yes, that that would be my recommendation. That's what I think gets you the best.
Two and a half is two and a half percent?
Yeah, that's what that outlet is running at, yeah.
Right, at sixty feet, two and a half percent is a is fifteen.
Or so.
Yeah.
Yeah, correct. I mean, it's it's the difference there.
Yeah.
Between those two, so. As far as the grade off the fence line, it's screedin'. I mean, that's, you don't see that grade on anything.
Right, but it's sixty feet.
Right, yeah.
Even even if it got pressurized, it would push.
So.
All right. Any further comments? Meter side. I would take a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Motion by Garmin.
Second.
Second by Stecker. Uh, do we need a report ball note for closing? Yeah, roll call go please.
Yes.
Haas.
Yes.
Garmin.
Yes.
Stecker.
Yes.
Wactor.
Yes. Motion carries, public hearing is closed. And we're moving on to.
That's a big time.
Yep.
Yep, so discussion decision on public hearing, um. Take motion to any.
So you're you're looking for a motion to whether do this or not do this?
Basically, yeah.
And I and I I would appreciate um. Something to the effect, if if it were to go, that it would be amended per the discussions we've had today. Uh, which is essentially the inclusion of that box structure.
Planned replacement of box structure?
Correct. If that's the direction we wanna go, just. For clarification on clarification for me as to what to do.
I guess from, I've I've said it before, I don't wanna beat the same dead horse, but um. From the standpoint of the district having less than two tenths of an inch per day. Upstream of the junction box and nine tenths of an inch per day downstream of the junction box in normal conditions. I. I would have a lot of concerns, especially with some of the unanswered questions yet today. I can definitely rationalize with future proofing things, but I don't believe the law or any of the situations. Has or will change significantly enough to impact a. Future project or ability to do a future project in this case.
Can we keep, can we keep discussing the non-motion?
We can, yeah.
Okay, so so. Don't take anything personally, you're hanging your hat on on the district facilities versus this private facility. If this private facility was hooked. Into the district fac- facilities and and sent directly into the box, they they could have done that, right?
So they are hooked into the box.
I understand that, they aren't they?
Yeah, they are.
They are, but they they could have hooked into a tile that was already coming into the box. And then and then, well, they had.
As long as they pay.
But they are paying.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
They are, they are paying assessment.
But if they hypothetically, if it's a twenty-four inch pipe and they hooked a twenty-four inch pipe into it upstream. It would have still had the capacity of a twenty-four inch pipe coming into the box. So for the district facilities, it's.
So it almost seems to me like they did him a favor by going all the way to the box.
True, but even even with that, there's sufficient capacity above and beyond what's.
But it's not the numbers you quoted, it's not the two tenths and the nine tenths, but.
The district facilities are, yeah. The total capacity, we don't know, that's what Tyler said before, we don't, we don't have a. Full details and publicity data.
Can I ask? What are your unanswered questions?
I guess the wetlands would be a financial impact, I mean, I don't know if anybody's talked to the N R C S on this. Hopefully, it would be a limiting thing, but the other would be more of a all encompassing or true actual cost. Obviously, we would get that in the form of bids at that point in time, but if we make the plan to move forward on it. And it's. Significantly different than what was proposed to landowners, then.
You can always, you can always, don't mean to to interrupt, but you can always, and and all we always do have a reserved rights to. To reject all bids.
What what is the process of finding out through the N R C S?
That would. My recommendation would be to send a request notice to the landowners. Because they're the only ones that can go in and request the the wetland determinations. Once you knew where those wetlands are, you can more better determine the potential impacts. There is no true way of knowing until. You essentially outline where the wetlands are, what the potential project is, and you truly gauge. The feeling from the agency, what their potential ruling would be.
So it would, it would be best to have that before we. Like what, so if we we wanna do that, say we wanna send that out. Then it comes back and we have the determination, then do we decide to move forward? Or do we, or can we move forward still with this part of it? On.
I think you could do, I think you could do the two simultaneously.
Okay, that's what I was wondering. And and good, yeah.
The the problem is, we're talking two different things. And we're there, we're talking about what might be upstream wetlands. And we're also talking about. They were anticipating a thirty thousand dollar deal and and. This could quickly, I mean, I don't wanna, I don't wanna shoot a number out there that I don't know about, but but have you reengineer and put out the bids and everything? And.
My my recommendation is, and the code states that, so if there's there are change orders more than twenty-five percent.
Which is a bad deal?
It, once you have those numbers, it requires another public hearing.
Okay.
So that's that's why, while you're not starting over, you're bringing people together with.
Which I'm for.
With, yes.
I'm for that.
But when would that change order happen?
I my recommendation would be that it be treated before you even accepted the. That that additional information be disseminated to people.
So you get the bids and then have another public hearing before accepting the bid?
Correct.
Before accepting?
Correct.
Okay.
That would be, that I think would be my recommendation on this, and also you could then set that. You could, if you're going to work in unison, you could have.
Wetland determination.
At the same time.
Okay.
But you could, you you've already spent some money and you're gonna spend some more, and you're okay with that?
I'll try now, prepare for the future.
That's a yes.
Yeah.
Any thoughts from from you, PJ?
Well, it's just. You know, you gotta start somewhere and the outlets, what's being discussed, might as well. Do it now.
So what do you need?
It only gets more expensive throughout the years.
Do you feel like more needs to be done upstream of the outlet? I mean, you talk about.
Oh, yeah, I mean, I I put in a whole domain, it was up to me, but that's not. I mean, I I know how many acres, we went and dised our slews, and we have an acre counter on that tractor on that disc just to see what we dised. I mean, there's there's a lot, lot of excess water up there. So and we've we've never shied away from tile, and it's patterned tile, but. Yeah, it was about one to three percent.
It would make a lot more sense to do with a project if that's the desire of the district.
Right, but this serves as a jumping in point two.
It's a stepping stone, it's one thing crossed off the list. Because they go talking new main. Now, I I I don't, I don't know if the same people that are on board with fixing the outlet are on board with the domain.
What's your feeling of, are they gonna be on board with fixing the outlet if it goes to seventy-five thousand dollars?
Well, I mean, I can't answer that without talking to them, cause you know, before we were looking at fifteen five, I think, is the number.
Adjustments.
Might have been thrown out there. And I think this is a moving target, and we we don't.
We don't know.
We don't know.
Well, I've I'm I'm sitting here without making a motion, I'm sitting here leaning toward. Find out, send out the notices, get everybody, give them, give them one more chance and. I I'm gonna lean forward to giving them, giving them what they, the people that are here say they want. I'll I'll even make that motion today, but. If we can agree that that's the wrong thing to do before I make that motion, I mean, we wanna get this more information, see if people can track down, can we do that?
Well, I, well, when you ask doing this, send those notices if that takes place, because if we. If we're gonna send that notice and say then we are over, then we we open bids, well, then maybe the opportunity to come back and object to that.
That's fine, I I.
Are we kinda doing that anyway?
I think, I think what Howard's after and the and the process that as we've discussed it. We're we are set to do everything that.
I don't want it to be what I'm asking.
Well, what what you're, what you outlined.
Yeah, I I I have no.
Right.
I've had no dog in the hunt, but.
Well, anybody has tiled, we've had to get wetland determinations from a tile anyhow. I mean, I could just go probably find. Find them in the file cabinet from past tile projects, so I. You have to get a wetland determination.
Right.
So I mean, I had, I had all that done, everything I fired, but I had, you got prior converted, you, I just didn't have any fired wetlands at all.
If it's old prior converted, you can do what you like.
We just don't know what everybody in this district is, but but again, that's a whole, that's a whole nother issue. That's one issue and and there's the issue of the cost of what you wanna do too. So, I mean, if if it's all, referring to what you said, if it's all gonna cause it to start over, these notices are gonna go out again. We could come in here and and we'll know at that point.
Would we'd have numbers in hand, yes. We'd have the, hopefully, that if the plan would be. That we would have wetland determinations from everybody in one hand, we'd have a.
But we can't force them to do that.
We can't force them to do that, and we and the district is not responsible for the mitigations in the event that. You know, there could be considerations, but there's no requirement, the district.
I'm I'm, yeah, okay.
Right, and so so we can't make them do that, and we can't be held accountable for inaction of doing it.
No, but it's it's less than ten landowners, is that is that correct?
Yeah, I don't like, let's see, you got Bob Goishy, you got my brother, you got PJ, you got Roger Vaskey and Dan Vaskey. Uh, Joel, and and well, my two corporations, you know, that's my hit.
Taylor's.
Whoa, 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 yeah.
You got Taylor's and then you got Brad and girlfriend and our coworker, they wanna afford that.
So Kyle's up to ten, the way you, he's leaning, and nobody's saying loud enough to be heard, but so you're up to ten, I, you know. I wanna give you what you want, if you want, if you want, if you wanna pay for it, everybody wants to pay for it. And I I know we've already, I know we're reinventing the wheel, cause we 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 sent it out once, but what's the harm in doing it again? They're paying for it. Give me a look.
No, just listening.
Well, I just think with everything that's been said today, it might be the the best path, and then if it can, I don't know, I'm for. Trying to do things best for the future too, if it.
Ultimately, it's gonna come down to a tough decision.
But you'll have information in hand.
Yeah.
You'll have what wetland determinations people decide to turn.
What do we have to do to the updates?
What's our, what's our, what's our question?
What do we have to do, make a motion to?
It would, it would take a motion to uh, one, send the wetland determination letters. And two, to proceed to a bid letting with the plan as.
Amended today.
Amended today.
If you're okay letting that money.
Hey now.
Tyler, Tyler, sorry.
Okay, so so one, so one would just be a a motion to send wetland.
Can we have Bolton and Ming send those?
Yes, and well, we've, we've, we have traditionally created those letters and we would be fine to send them, yes.
Sending them.
Okay, that's good.
So it's in the situation that the.
So you would send those on behalf of the landowners?
On behalf of the district.
We would send those on behalf of the district.
Of the landowners in the district.
For each each of these ten people.
Okay.
They would receive.
Four if it's fifteen.
Yeah, well, we're sending it to the landowners, asking that they go get the determination. I can't do anything.
You can land on heavy in the letter, they'll say you don't wanna die.
We do, it's it's pretty.
Yeah. Ain't telling your responsibility.
Uh huh.
That's the way it is. So don't do nothing, but you get fined.
I I'll make that motion.
Wait, he didn't finish. Bolton makes that wetland what?
Direct Bolton and Ming to send wetland.
Determination.
Determination letters to all affected landowners in the district.
That's one motion, or are we?
That that would be one.
Number one, let's get past this.
Do that one.
Very simple.
Okay, so I'll second that. Everybody, you're okay so far?
Oh, yeah, well, yeah.
Okay? I didn't hear you.
I'm not gonna have a problem with that, we've all been part of the working.
I hope so, I hope so, yeah, and I hope it costs us a hundred dollars to mail that down, or five hundred, whatever it is that that can be made.
All right, so we need to vote?
Yep, so we got a motion by Stecker, a second by Haas to send the wetland determination, or have. Bolton makes some of the wetland determination letters. I don't think we need to roll call. All those in favor.
Let's do it. Let's do, let's do one more question, let's do a discussion here quick.
Yeah, go ahead.
Nothing, can we say, that, that has to be said, we can't say anything there about. The possibility of it someone determining it's improvement or whatever, that's a separate issue?
I would think you could word it similar, but stronger than what you said in the letter, and say that it may be considered.
Yes, it, I, I don't know exactly what it says, but it's, it's pretty.
Okay, all right.
It, it errors on conservative.
Okay, all right, all right, that's my discussion.
Okay, any further discussion on the motion? Any none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, and motion carries. All right, so we are looking for another motion, this would be to.
Be to proceed to bid letting on the plan as amended.
Amended today.
From today's discussion.
At the, at the hearing.
And then, and then follow up with notification again.
Right, it, proceed to the, the bid letting, um, essentially, uh, how do we wanna say this? Pursuant to an additional.
Pursuant to the changes discussed today. An additional notice?
Correct. Essentially meaning that we wouldn't approve those bids or award without.
Without no reaction.
Reconsulting the district because of the amendments and the likely change in the cost.
Yes. Okay, I'll make that motion.
Okay, I need the second part though, I have to proceed to bid letting pursuant to the amendments made today, and was there a second part to that?
Additional notice.
Yeah, and send further notification to landowners.
Before awarding.
Before awarding the project.
Well, that sounds good.
No, solemnly.
All right, we have a motion and a second, uh, would you like to read the motion again, or?
Mm-hmm, motion by Stecker, second by Garmin, to proceed to bid letting pursuant to the amendments made today and send further notification to landowners before awarding the project.
Okay, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor please say aye.
Aye.
Any close? Any, um, motion carries?
All right.
Anything for. Okay, all right.
Thank you all.
Yeah, thanks for coming in.
Um, didn't you need to do the DD eighty-two at thirty-three?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
I promised that one will be.
Okay.
I promised that one will be quicker.
I thought you were leaving.
No, no, no.
I'll give you that back.
Here, I'll give you this back.
Oh, oh, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Yes. We're on to the next.